Seven o'clock, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Invite everyone to please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kelly, did you call the roll call?
Jim Donbeck.
Here.
Steve Nelson.
Here.
Jay Shiloh.
Here.
Janine Davey.
Here.
Michael DeVito.
Here.
Eric Jones.
Here.
Kristen Wren.
Here.
The board is present.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda as proposed? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as proposed?
A move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So do.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Wren?
Yes.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Davey?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Donbeck?
Yes.
Motion carrying.
Audience to visitors, is there anyone in the audience this evening who would like to address the board? Want to see anybody? Okay. Next item then is communications, correspondence, informational items. Letters and newsletters. Lots and lots of mood newsletters. Any comments on those? FOIA requests, there aren't any at this point in time? Committee reports. No committee reports?
No, I'll say the community feels like it was a long time ago, but it's been a while, so since we've had a board meeting, but the community advisory committee met for the first time this year. So it was a time where we welcomed a new half of the group. So normally if you're on the committee, you serve for two years, so there's constantly half the group is rotating. So kind of introductions was a big part of it, and then Mr. Walter went over, stated the district, and went through that presentation. So we got some feedback from the new committee members, older committee members, and then just encouraged a lot, had some open dialogue in regards to the redistricting process and some of the commendable ratings for the schools. And then I think just ending with a little bit of encouragement of bringing feedback, those committee members bringing people feedback from different, there's a good representation of every school, so I think just continually bringing feedback or questions or topics to discuss, just so that I think there's more dialogue than we had. So, yeah, this is the first one this year, and then we meet next quarter, I think, January is the next one.
Were people caught up guard by the redistricting conversation, or did they seem to be aware?
Steve, did you, I didn't get a feel on the room, one way or another on that?
I didn't either, so my takeaway was that nobody was surprised.
Yeah.
So they either were aware of it, or...
Or potentially not affected by it as well, I'd say, you know, because some just haven't, she's a high schooler, so it's kind of outside of mind, so.
Okay.
But yeah, there wasn't, yeah, we can say it wasn't the one way of just every jaws dropping, so, but there wasn't an out.
That's good.
It's a select group of people, and also I don't want, I don't want people to feel like the only way that they can possibly get feedback is this way. You can obviously email the board, you can, there's different ways to get ahold of different people in the district, so this is just one avenue. So if there are questions or something like that, I'd encourage you to send anything else. But no, I didn't feel strongly one way or another on that.
Any other committee reports? Okay, next item then is board member appreciation.
Well, I'm not gonna miss the opportunity. Lauren, obviously Lauren Holt's here. Come in Communication Department, put out a social media post today, a picture of the seven board members looking very dignified. And I put in the post...
I'm airbrushed.
I responded, I shared the post, and I added some content. Being a school board member is volunteer position, it's not paid, it's oftentimes thankless because you're responsible for a lot of decisions that have to get made. And over the last couple of years, it's been, it's been pretty tough, tough to be in that spot across the country, let alone some of the issues that we dealt with here. So you guys have done a lot, you've endured a lot, you've stuck it out, and although there were a lot of times to really kind of get hung up on the negative and the challenges that we faced, I know that we were constantly looking for the opportunity to do good things, do the right things for kids and for our staff and for our community. I always tell people, it's hard to be a board member, but the last couple of years have been particularly challenging, and this year, it really feels like we're reaping the benefit of all of that work being done in the past and moving forward. We can't do that without the leadership that you seven have demonstrated. I work with you directly, a lot of people don't have that opportunity. I appreciate everything that you do, and I hope that our community does too. So on this, and it just so happens that today is National School Board Member Appreciation Day, so how fitting that there was a board meeting and everyone can celebrate you guys. So on behalf of myself, the administration, the entire school district and community, thank you for all that you do.
You're welcome.
There are a couple of other things that we have. First of all, before we move on, I want to highlight Eric and Steve. I don't know if you guys even know this, Eric was recognized by the Illinois Association of School Boards as an established board leader. She has a little card that I'll give you, you can put that in the frame at home in your office. Steve was recognized as a distinguished board leader, so I'll pass this on. All the results of training, professional development that you guys have participated in, and that's just another example of the extra thing that all seven of you do to be prepared and be good board members. Okay, I want to make sure, do I need to, what do I need to do to click on these?
Um, that's a great question.
There we go.
One of my best words.
Ecstatic.
Cool.
Intelligent.
Innovative.
Leaders.
Extraordinary.
Encouraging.
Future-focused.
Responsible.
Inspirational.
Fair.
Respectful.
Hard-working.
Thoughtful.
Intelligent.
Supportive.
Romo.
Skillful.
Strong.
Paper.
Beyond measure.
Advisors.
Amazing.
Family driven.
Passionate.
Determined.
Powerful.
Open-minded.
Fortunate.
Influential.
Sparky.
So that's the first of two videos, so I'd round of applause for Spartan TV Junior. Saw Mr. Walters walk in, he's one of our Spartan TV Junior leaders and coordinated that video, so Mr. Walters, we appreciate that. But that's not the only video we have, we've got one more. Stephen, you wanna take it away?
Thank you Board of Education.
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 So that video was produced by Spartan TV at the high school, so round of applause for... Mr. Dario is the advisor for Spartan TV, so Mr. Dario, thank you for your kids for putting that together. Last but not least, if I haven't forgotten anything, you all have gifts there to enjoy. In fact, I'm gonna ask you to go ahead and open the bags, just the bags for now, and I'll let Mr. Franks take over after that. It took me a long time to put these together, so I hope you appreciate it. No, I had nothing to do with it, but I, Kelly Ben... Kelly put them together and did a great job.
Thank you, thank you so much.
So you got some sweets in there that came from Ms. Benz.
No kidding.
Can I see that cup still? Do you mind if I open that?
No.
So this was, this kind of plays along to our sustainability. These are collapsible cups, I couldn't believe it when Kelly showed me what they were. These things literally, they're collapsible, you can hide in there, you're cold in there, there's a straw that comes in there, you can reuse them, wash them, but they collapse. So often it's nice to take cups on the road, and you've got to find a place to store them, or you don't have to do that with these, they just collapse, and makes them a lot easier to take care of. So Kelly was the one that spotted these, and like I said, it kind of went along with the sustainability effort within the school district, so. Thank you. I think that's all we have for board member appreciation, so thank you again for all that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you Board of Education.
You're welcome. Next item then would be the Assistant Superintendent's report. So I'm gonna ask Mr. Franks to step up, I see some of North's staff out there as well, so you guys want to stand up real quick, draw attention to you, huh? No? No, they don't want to, they're there though. Mr. Franks is gonna let us know what's going on here, so go ahead, Mr. Franks.
Well, first and foremost, we are always the building that gets the honor to honor you, and so it's especially special this evening because it's on the actual appreciation day. I usually feel like it's kind of like, you know, opening Christmas presents early, and then when it gets to the day, you're like, mm, okay. This way, we get to celebrate the same way together. And there's no better way to celebrate than some cake. So we have some cupcakes for you there from our staff and the K-5 team, beautiful, from small cakes, and then you also get some North School swag, just a little sticker for, you know, water bottles, your laptops, or whatever you need.
Our new cup?
New cup? But just so you, just kind of to expand on that a little bit further, your just commitment to hearing local people is second to none. You have great regard and passion for what you're doing for all of our stakeholders. I find all of you approachable and collaborative, it's also always awesome when we have our board admin retreats that we get to talk with you and share ideas freely, and then just to stick more pride in this room for many, many years. So on behalf of all of us, we just appreciate you and what you do, so. Who's the Steve?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to North School, are you clicking or mic?
I'm clicking, unless you want the, you want to drive?
No, you can go ahead, you can drive, I'll let you, see if you can keep up. All right, so welcome to North School, you have 252 students, just, you know, a little asterisk there, this is the smallest enrollment we've had here at North for quite some time, over a decade. So it's very interesting that that fact is there, but we're all here, we're proud of having all the kids that we have. We have 38 Golden staff, we have awesome volunteers, we have some fabulous Spartan, I'm sorry, some high school teacher assistants that come and help us, as well as some volunteers and additional support staff who kind of do extraterrestrial activities, like music and all this stuff, so we appreciate that. All of us geared toward this vision of a community of confident collaborative learners, that's what we do here at North, and that's kind of our vision, so I really appreciate all of those things happening. At the beginning of every year, we want to start with some clarity and focus, and so this year, when we were talking with staff, we kind of re-identified our why. Why are we here? What are we doing? Some of those important conversations. We also implemented this whole idea of intentional reflection, so we got a journal, I made them do journal prompts, and, you know, I think just the power of reflection is huge, both in their day-to-day life of trying to keep balance, but also with the instructional strategies and resources they're using, funny quotes or clips from kids, just some things that, you know, you can reference back to or just think through in your day. Because sometimes you get bogged down with a lot of heavy, and I think sometimes you just need a little time to write some stuff down, and you're really enjoying part of your day. As far as the EC5 team, we're the third presentation I believe you've heard, hopefully you hear some common themes through that. We're all about building meaningful relationships, that's here at the voting level, but also through the EC5 world, as well as a commitment to consistency and best practices. As we know that there are some, maybe some changes on the horizon, we're all working toward making sure that kids are getting a similar experience, no matter where they go to school. So this year, we had a collaborative session with all of you to write some district goals. And so I thought I would take the opportunity to go through those goal areas with you, and kind of just talk about what North is doing to support those goals. As of November, just so you know, some of these things are in place, and some of these things are going to be future focus, but just so you know, kind of our intentionality. I'll address all the next of finance, I think we can address that in our board present, our budget presentation and things like that later this year. All right, you just started with learning and achievement. So our students, we're focusing on growth over reading and math. So we have, we take our baseline fall map data, and we work toward improvement in both of those areas. We have implemented some win-time improvements. I think they're improvements, maybe everybody would say that, but we've kind of made them more flexible, we've allowed teachers to be more reflective or responsive in teaching. And so before, we had a really strict time where you would have kids for this amount of time, and you would do this committee program, and we thought that was a little stifling. And so I think this year, with the improved flexibility, I think teachers are really feeling that connection to what they're doing and how they're helping their kids. We're doing a lot of student goal setting, we do that in every math cycle, we have their score, we talk to them about what their score might mean, and then how they can work toward that goal with their math testing. Sometimes kids just seem to know that what they're doing is a serious thing, not that they're getting graded or things like that, but we just want them to take it seriously and do the best that they can. And then we're working on these personalized learning packs, so some of us are really looking at what kids need and their win time, trying to push them forward if they're ready for the next essential, sometimes their front-looking vocabulary and things like that. So I think we're really just trying to use some of the tech pieces we have with eSpark and Freckle to kind of get some of this personalized learning off the ground. We have a new or refreshed importance for instructional practices, so we're doing a share-out at every faculty meeting, we have instructional coaches who are coming and doing a cycle on their resources and what they can offer our teachers. So I just think we're trying to really make sure that we're having the best practices and instructional resources we can for our teachers, and then using that for our students. We're also using a building-wide approach, so a couple years ago, we found out that our vocab skills across the building through math tests weren't as strong as maybe we thought, so this year, we implemented a word of the week. I announce it every Monday or the first day of the week, we kind of talk about that through announcements of the week, and our teachers are doing a great job doing follow-up activities with those words. We even now have some word of the week focus, bulletin boards and whiteboards, so the kids can see the importance of new vocabulary, not only finding it, but using it and doing it, like this week is Gather, so just a little idea of getting together for these common purposes. Again, we're always using our data to support our instructional decisions. Academics, I think we have down pat, the thing that we're working on next is behavioral. I think as an EC5 team, we're looking at what behavior data we need to track, and how we can help students, as well as important emphasis on some other factors, like attendance, those small pockets of groups that maybe we don't always talk about, or how are our males versus females doing some of these assessments? How are our low-income students doing compared to other students? Are we meeting every kid's need? And I think some of those conversations are really important, and we're going to start pushing in our winter and spring baby days. Above all, I feel like in the learning achievement world, you really can't do any of that without relationships. Our staff does a great job of building those relationships with kids from day one, but we've also taken a building-wide approach to that this year, with like implementing team time. So if you've been around, maybe as long as I have, West School started that with Mary Curry a long, long time ago, where kids were divided, all our kids are divided amongst adults in the building. So 22 groups of kids that meet together once a month to have some collaboration time, some team time, and then do some projects. Last month, we made a great big puzzle together, tomorrow, we're working on gratitude leaves. So I think our goal with this is not only to build student leaders within those groups, but to have another adult in our building where kids can connect to and really feel like they have that importance. As far as programs and services, I won't go through a lot of these with you, because you're gonna see this across the board, but our curriculum committees have started, grade level essentials is being reviewed, we're looking at really focusing our PLC time on collaboration and sharing of ideas and, sharing ideas, reviewing information, and sharing that data. And then we're doing lots of intentional tier-one instruction for SEL and building expectations. Our kids have come back from COVID, they're doing great in the classroom, they're having a really rough time in some of our unstructured spaces, like the lunchroom and the hallway. One of the things that we realized as a BLT is we wanted to have an assembly. For our kids, most of them have never been to an assembly, they didn't have, had no idea what they would act like or need to know for that, so we took some time, intentional time, taught them assembly expectations, and I think we had a really good Veterans Day assembly because of it. So sometimes we're just reinforcing that work. Coming soon, we're gonna be reevaluating our Walk to Learn program, we've found that there's some pieces there that we really want to tweak, and so we're gonna work on that with the committee of Mike Rice, and then also expanding our work with diversity and equity. We always have an awareness of that, but I think just, in its infancy, just trying to make that more of a common theme that we're discussing more often. As far as facilities, I know that you've already seen these pictures from Mr. Exstrom and the wonderful work he did this summer, but North was a recipient of a lot of work this summer and this fall, like drinking grounds were updated, and we had asbestos removed, brand-new tile over here, the playground got resurfaced, there you can see it's got ripped out over there, a nice foundation layer, cement work, we did tub pointing, kindergarten furniture, we have these great big announcement bulletin boards, you saw the TVs as you walked in, and then our staff redesigned and repurposed our multipurpose room, looks fabulous with their paints and their plants, so we appreciate that. It's very apparent that when we do take great pride, we're building, kids take great pride in it too, and so they really appreciated a lot of these changes, it's both our staff, I just feel like, even as I was walking with Mr. Steve Wilder, Mr. Wilder, when the cafeteria got new lights, just new light bulbs, not fixtures, nothing, it just changed the space entirely, just, so we appreciate all of the efforts that we've done with the facilities here at North. And there you can see kind of the finished product, this aerial photo shows you our nice new blacktop with some horse wheels on there, so we're really looking forward to that opening up this winter, right, Mr. Exstrom?
Yeah.
Last goal of the district, really trying to, the community patient team really to have a sponsor events for people to come to, so North is doing their part with that. We are trying to integrate our community partners, and you can see there that we had a Walk-a-thon, and many of those people were presenters of that. We're also allowing parents on field trips and ETL events, we just had our Fall Fest, we're getting ready for our holiday shop, kids are excited about that. And then showcases and performances, just kids, parents can get involved and see what's happening in the classroom or in the presentation. So our first graders are gonna do the Thanksgiving performance this week, and in December, our fifth graders are gonna do Holiday Around the World, so just lots of things like that for people to get involved. Obviously, we're gonna be seeking feedback for our boundary study town hall meetings, and then as an EC5 team, just improving that communication that we're putting out to parents about celebrations and things like that. So those are kind of North School's adaption, or things that we're trying to do to implement the district goals in our own way, but we have an ongoing commitment to evaluating and assessing what's going, what's working here, what isn't working, and can we do it better? We have a great staff who's really reflective about that. We want our kids to be engaged and have leadership opportunities, we're really keen on celebrating success, we want to make sure that that's a big priority for us moving forward, as well as preparing for the future. We don't necessarily know what skills kids are gonna need to know for their future work world, except maybe one, to be good people, right? To be collaborative and good people, and so that's what we're trying to do here at North, is really have that as an underlying foundation for our kids. And last but not least, we're never gonna be a platform up here where they won't talk about people that make all this happen. This is the heart of what makes this work. So, you know, our students are fabulous, our families are super supportive, we have great financial support from our PTO and Music Boomsters, the foundation. I really appreciate my new admin team, we get together several times a week, as well as the intensified support from our larger admin team. I think we've done some great activities this year, I feel like we're all on the bus, we've got some great people on the bus, and the bus is moving in the same direction for all of us, and so that's huge. As well as our store personnel around the district, ridden the bus a couple of times, those bus drivers do a fabulous job, from our custodians, our secretary of staff, but most importantly, the North staff, Dario applauded them, they're a fantastic group of people that this has worked, and we're very, we're very lucky to have the people that we have here, and the family like the atmosphere they provide for people. We have people come in all the time, visitors, peers, substitutes, just the feeling of family that they get when they walk into York, and so that's big for us, and that's something we want to continue. That's North School, 2022.
Questions?
Thomas, are you, can you speak a little bit about the effect of COVID on our elementary school kids more academically? Are there things that you see, either patterns or things that concern you?
I think we're seeing in certain pockets, certain things, but I don't think we have a universal, oh my gosh, this happened, or this concern. Like I said, I think the academics are more, are stronger than maybe some of the social skills, and maybe the expectations of how do I perform, or how do I use school, just because that learning environment was so fluctuating for a couple of years. And so, especially with our littles, as they've been kind of going through, you can tell that maybe they didn't have a solid preschool experience or kindergarten experience, because you're doing different things with them.
How about like reading levels and things like that at like third and fourth grade? Kids that were first and second grade during COVID, they're third and fourth grade now, are they caught up, are they exceeding, or are they still kind of trying to find their way? I've heard a lot of, I've read a lot about the reading component at that age.
I mean, I'll be overly gentle with you, but I think, you know, we do have a pocket of kids who that has impacted a lot, but as far as universal, are we looking at, oh my gosh, third and fourth grade, we have a change record, and we have to do something different? Not necessarily for everything, there might be things that they didn't get to as much in the year before, so we might have to raise some different foundation, but I think we're moving at a good pace comparative to what we maybe thought that we would have to do. Our math scores were extremely strong, considering we didn't know that would happen, we were like, oh, we're looking for this slide or this app. Again, a couple of pockets that happened, but universally did not.
Anything else?
Thank you.
All right, enjoy your... Thank you for... For theirs turnout.
for their turnout and their presence here this evening. I know there's always a little bit of, there's certainly a lot of preparation that goes into this and probably a little bit of trepidation at the same time. But so we thank you for, for your hosting us this evening. It's always a pleasure to come to North School. It's good to hear your report, which sounded very positive. Thank you.
Thanks for the couple of years.
Yeah, so thanks for the appreciation.
I didn't thank them.
You could take credit for it. Assistant Superintendent for Business Services Report, Facility Project.
Thanks, Jen. I'm actually going to ask Mr. Ekstrom to come off. And so we've got two pieces we're going to talk about tonight. We're going to give Facility Project Review, so our five-year plan, and then kind of our bigger plan of kind of larger projects that need to be done that we don't have funding for. And then the second piece of the presentation will be specifying one project, and that's the high school softball field that we'd like to move forward to. So I'm going to turn it over to Mark.
All right, good to see everyone here again tonight. So if you want to click to the next page, thank you. So I put together some of the big key projects that I've been talking to building principals about, looking and seeing and hearing, and then looking at what comes across our school due data that comes across it, shows what needs constant repair. That's something that gets high on the priority list. Then do we, is it cheaper to replace it in the long run? Or do we keep on repairing it to keep on going forward there? So I kind of grabbed some of the big items for you guys to see what's in the five-year plan. And having, if you guys remember, we went over this a few years ago with the ten-year plan. Some of these items are on here that you see and some of them aren't because they just kind of crept up as buildings age and some things kind of surprised us at times. And having in such as like we talked about, you know, like the high school, the electricity at the high school for the field out there, finally, when it blew, we couldn't get to go again. So, you know, that was a $30,000 project I had not planned for in my budget when we talked last year. And having in, so that's something that just automatically knows those things happen out there. And then how to repair that and get that going so we have the electricity for that area. And having, so you can see, we're looking at, you know, the BAS upgrade. So for those who don't know, that's our system that talks to the HVAC and the heating and air conditioning. That allows me, you see, over there on the computer, I'm talking to the system constantly telling you to turn stuff on, turn stuff off when it's not cooperating. And having in, it cooperates quite a bit, but then there's also times that it just has some things that goes on with it. I got to tell it to do some stuff in there. This town gets a tremendous amount of brownouts. And so then I got to tell stuff to come back on as well during the brownouts. When we have a complete power outage, everything is programmed to come right backed up after a power outage. But with these brownouts we've been having here the last month and a half, we've had to go back and really turn on a bunch of air handler units. And those actually have to physically go in and tell them to shut them completely down, bring them back on. But I can tell by the BAS that they're offline and if not working correctly. Admin was that way the other day. I came in and I'm like, it's quiet. Why is it quiet? And so look at the BAS, all that the unit downstairs wasn't running. Go downstairs, just power it down, power it back up. It recycles and comes back in and having. You can see then I have in there, we got some field leveling to do as part of my project. So, you know, I have a grounds budget on top of my rectwood budget. So I have, I put it at thirty-five thousand for this year. I'm going to leave it at thirty-five thousand. But some of that money then goes to, you know, I'm constantly replacing trees and shrubs. We spent about $14,000 in mulch, you know, $10,000 it goes for the playgrounds to keep the playground mulch where it needs to be at for safety levels. The other $4,000 is to keep the elementaries and the high school looking good. We see those mulch areas out there. So it's hard to believe that I spent out of my $35,000 budget, I spent $14,000 just on mulch for that kind of stuff coming in. I am going to use $10,000 to level out some of the backfields there that are just, they be down and they're not good for playing surfaces. It's not good for kids' knees and ankles. And so it's just a safety thing that the coach has been bringing up to me every single year since I've been in this spot. And here's a chance, I've been watching the water, how it flows back there so it's not going to affect the flowage of water from the parking lots off. And having, so we'll be working on that part and having in that. And then I'm building into my budget because Eric, you asked me a couple of years ago, how much does it take to really run the district? I'm kind of getting some of these numbers down, like how to do some things in there. You know, so like I have to put aside, you know, $85,000 then out of my budget in there just for roofing, seal coating, and tuck pointing. Tuck pointing is something I've been looking at, like we've got to really have a rotation for tuck pointing. We came back and we did a ton of tuck pointing in the last two years on all seven buildings. And so if we kind of pick on a building, I'll look at that building, work with local contractors, go out and keep that under $25,000 so it doesn't have to go out the bid. We can do small tuck pointing, keep our tuck pointing and keep our buildings tight that way. And we would see something that needs them to get that going. We've been doing a great job replacing these parking lots out there, but if we don't seal coat them, our parking lots got an average of 12 years. They're supposed to last 20 to 25. We got 12 out of most of these last projects. And so if we seal coat them on that rotation, we should then get that 15 to 20 to 25 years out of them. And having in, so I put seal coating back in, it was due to John Jacobson. You know, he was talking about that. Then I started looking at what our blacktops were. And then I was looking to see how little sealant was on them and how much the water then kind of comes in. And once they start going, they just start going. I mean, poor Thomas is back. I mean, we tried to, a couple of years ago, go get this done, but the money wasn't there. So you guys got it for us because that back blacktop was in really rough shape back there. And having in, and you can only patch it so much. Those patches are never completely leveled. They kind of have some spots and then they heave with the winter frost. So those type of things we look at. And then again, just for the roofing care, we've done a bunch of new roofs, but they do need care to keep them going. So you just can't leave them for the next 10 years. We got to go up there, work with the companies to go up there, look for the spots that need to be resealed. They've got the product then that they have for us and they kind of come back and forth. And so I have that built in as part of that then to keep on doing that. So you'll see that I have this cost in each of those years built into my, my budget now to know I need to do these things to keep these buildings where we need them, where we spent so much money to get the roofs under control. We still have roofs, as you can see later on, that we have to finish. We've got, you know, classrooms and everything else that we got to look at. Then you can look at 24, 25. I was able to reseal the southeast teacher parking lot issue to get me one more year to get us to the point that we can resurface that one out there. If you guys saw in some of the plans that we presented to you guys that went out for bid, the parking lot for a complete redo for what we want to do, they add more parking with 1.5 million. So we couldn't, we couldn't come up with that for that. So if we leave that spot the exact same way it is, we come in, we take off, the grind the coat down, put a new one on top, about 65,000 compared to 1.5 million. So the, you know, we just don't gain any parking spots at Southeast Christie. I'm sorry about that, but at least we get you back that one. But we were able to sneak in the summer while we had the asphalt crews in. I did fix the one entrance coming in, their, their side entrance coming in for the poor teachers was down to just a narrow that you barely could, the car didn't fit on it. It was gravel and everything else. So while they're in there, I had Abbey paving, give me a price. We paid for it out of my district funds and to widen it out and finish that one off because we didn't have it as part of the project. But they, you know, timing material real fast, building into the district, and then we fixed that and coming in so that way those teachers have it. So I mean, when you kind of look at that lot, it looks kind of new. Until you really look at the teacher side, if you look at the teacher's side, you'll see that I got it so we can get it a little bit longer and having in there. The high school PA system, it's slowly going out. And so it's at, it's at age that is a chance for us here. Again, we use all original speakers, we use all the wires going out there. It just needs the backbone system to be able to keep that going. And so that's 24, 25 for that upgrade in that building. Exterior paint of North Grove Gym, that number, I hate to say, is way low. I, I was waiting for a number from Sales McNutt. It's $40,000 it costs us to paint the gym at West and the gym at Southeast. I looked at a totally different number. So just to let you know, I had to figure out how to paint North Grove Gym because I fell on my truck yesterday when somebody called me that it was $40,000 once I started going through all the numbers that we had for our previous project. So to paint that whole gym, you got to remember, North Grove Gym is the same age as Southeast and West Gyms. All three of those gyms were built the same year. If you look at how they're starting to peel on the outside, we were able to get Southeast done first and we were able to get West done this year. North Grove by 24, 25, we'll need to make that look good. You have the rest of the building looking beautiful, then you have a peeling gym off on the left-hand side. We'll need to put that out to get that looking back and going on that side there. But yeah, I was way off, I grabbed the wrong number. And then when you told me that the number was from there, I'm like, holy moly. We also then have to start talking about some playground equipment. And so North Grove has, we're still trying to, I don't understand how this ever happened, but the one company got the whole bid, but they put in two different types of playground equipment. One playground equipment is in really good shape. The other playground equipment, all in animal paint is coming off of it, and it's actually falling apart. So a couple of those pieces that are out there currently, we keep on piecing together on my end. And, you know, when we talk about it, my guys are amazing in what they're able to fix and manufacture and keep things safe for kids. But we're kind of almost at the end that we got to work on adding a couple of pieces, take those pieces out at North Grove and add them in. And then how can we keep that going? Playground equipment is outrageously expensive. Nothing is cheap, but you got to remember how much wear and tear it gets from, you know, 250 kids, 300 kids, 400 kids playing on it every single day. It has to be top quality. So 50,000 will not get us much, but it will get enough to replace the smaller pieces that are in bad shape that are over there. You know, we'll have to talk later on is, you know, how do we look at, you know, like the North Playground here, we had as far as the bid in which we didn't take it, but was to take the playground and the floodplain down here, remove that and put a new one up on the hill over here on the side and get it out of the floodplain. But again, you know, that was almost $150,000 just for one playground move over and be kind of comparable that was over there, but was missing a few components and having there. So again, we had it in the bid that went out, it just didn't make the bid. And so we didn't have the funds for that type of activity there. Again, my roofing, seal coating, tuck pointing to keep that going, to keep the buildings tight. 25, 26 then, that's where I'm looking at, you know, if I can, you know, use my money then to move that North Playground over there to that spot. Again, tuck pointing, seal coating, and having that. North Grove then, North Grove BAS upgrade. And so that is our newest building, which, you know, is already, what, almost 15 years old? So by the time we look at this point, Johnson Control will be at its point at its end where we either put a new Johnson Control in which we've moved away from and we'll move that to an NTEC system.
That was my question.
And having in, so we will move that to NTEC at that time.
Same thing at South Perry.
Yeah, South Perry will move to NTEC. So everything that we've done in our district so far since I've been here is that we moved it to NTEC. So when I came in, NTEC was kind of moving in to put their Delta Controls in instead of the Johnson Controls. And so the, why we moved to them is that if we don't like NTEC anymore, we can say goodbye NTEC and pick any other company out there. Johnson can't pick up if their stuff won't, but, you know, everyone else that has it on, they're non-proprietory, can come in and run that system. Right now, though, we're very happy with NTEC, they're out of Peoria. I've talked to them several times a day and coming in with things. You know, we did that upgrade, we've upgraded West, we've upgraded Southeast here this summer. We had the emergency project. If you guys remember that in January over Christmas break, we lost the BAS system at the high school. They came in over Christmas break and put in tremendous amount of hours to get that system under control so the heating, air, or the heating can work well for us. And so they saved us there at the high school level. So we still have half, all the VABs in that building are still on Johnson Control. So I still have about 75 items on there plus three air handlers still on Johnson Control.
So as we go year by year here at these 2022 prices, or are you projecting out?
So I projected out just a 3% increase.
You're low.
I know I'm low. I know, I'm low. I'm low, yeah, I probably should put 12.
At least I'm going to see it right now.
Yes, I should probably put 12 in because I don't think anything else is going to come down.
Average is about eight right, normal average is five or six, but it's about eight right now.
Yeah.
It could change, but.
And I just base, so this is based off of, you know, I get 275,000 from you each year for projects to work on around the district. So this is kind of based off of that. You'll see it has some extra money here because there's some, everything, every year something pops up that I need to kind of work on, and I left that extra funds in there for it. You know, in reality, if I could have 800,000, I could do a lot more, you know, when we look at it. Because Eric asked that question, I mean, you know, what do I need now? I've been in this position, I'm going on year four. What do I really need to be able to maintain 800,000 to maintain? I mean, that, you know, that's.
That's to maintain the academic spaces?
That's, so academic spaces, that's maintaining heating, air, lights, building envelope, parking lots, that's, that's just that, not, that's not taking the classrooms, that's a little bit of furniture inside or each year for a furniture upgrade. Because like the kindergarten furniture, we did all kindergarten furniture around here. That was 165,000 for kindergarten furniture for the whole district. So if you look at that, then if we could do that around, get, you know, the first grade furniture, that way second grade furniture, get back to the high school, gets on rotation. Because we used to be on rotation and they've got three new classrooms a year. So then you would upgrade that furniture for them and getting that. If you take a look at some of the furniture at the high school, it needs, it needs a little TLC. Middle School got some great furniture and they had their redo. But what I think about those kids, I wonder if we replace that.
But my point is that doesn't cover tennis courts, traps.
No, that is, yeah, that's just, yeah, that's just those, that's where I put the big projects. That is just the core things to keep rooftop units going, adding the, make sure the roofs are all set, the tuck pointing, the items that are going on around and having. And then, well, what do I have? I have 300, I have 250,000 emergency repairs. I'm at, I'm at 210,000 already, we're November. So my emergency repair line usually doesn't sit this, I'm a little nervous, you know, but I'm sitting, we're now in November with that, had that many repairs around. And so the age of stuff is catching up to us. A bunch of the actuators are starting to go out inside these buildings. When we had to do BAS now, they talk better. And now those actuaries aren't closing or opening correctly. So I have rooms overheating and not heating enough because they can't bring in the fresh air, they can't open the valves enough. And so then those actuators that are $1,500 apiece, takes three hours for them to put it in at $125 an hour, that all keeps adding up. And then there's two actuators in most of our UNIVENs, so we got to work on them. We got a valve over here, so when we're done, we've almost got $4,500 into that UNIVEN to get that back up and going. So and they start looking at number, UNIVENS in the district, you start going, wow. And then these VABs, the small little motor, it closes these heating and air conditioning up. There's heaters inside that opened up from the, you got 65-degree air coming through air handler above here. This then cools it, brings in cool air, heats it. There's a little valve that goes out, that little valve is $750. And they're starting to go out now, so we've been replacing those all around. So I just, you know, these little things, you start looking, it's like, oh, my God, how did that cost so much? One room cost me, you know, $3,300. And that's all building, that's emergency repairs is how I put that under because I was not planning on that room happening that way. So the district, the, the buildings are hitting us no matter what if we plan for it or if we don't plan for it. We have to repair some of these things to keep these envelopes safe for our kids, temperature quality safe for our kids and coming forward that way. But then, like I said, the North Grove BAS, since it is one of the newer Johnson Controls, it's still in good shape and coming in. So they come out twice a year to work on it, the Johnson Control does, they do some tweaks on it and having. But I've been noticing then some of the stuff going on at North Grove is those valves now are going out there. But it's a 15-year-old building. So they've done million turns, those valves have opening, closing, bringing hot water, cold water, and back and forth. So they've done their duty, but I keep on thinking the new building is new. Well, the new building is 15 years old. So I had one, I got to get that a little bit out of my head sometimes, like, no, it's North Grove, it's new. Don't worry about that. But then like, oh, it is 15 years old.
Does Johnson actually show up?
So Johnson shows up, they'll come there, and then all of a sudden, three hours in, they got a phone call, they got to go see the hospital. And then I'm like, well, are you coming back? So that is some of the part in there that was a little frustrating.
NTEC is not like.
No, NTEC is not like that. NTEC is right there, NTEC is one that comes back to save us. So we lost the middle school, we lost the air handle there for a couple of weeks. Johnson was one dealing with us, they came out, looked at it, gave us a price of 40,000 to fix it. And then they wanted me to send someone else out to come take another opinion. Like, no, we know what the problem is, we know how to fix it. I called NTEC that afternoon after they spent three days of time to come out to take a look at it, to give us all the information. And then they gave me the pricing. I called NTEC two days later, they were there and they fixed it for 8,000. Got it all up and going. So they are, I mean, they're quite the company. As I worry about everyone out there, you know, as us as teachers, we got to make sure the next crew is ready to be, ready to be working because the force that fixes our stuff, it's hard to find people to replace them. So these guys, so Matt from NTEC is two years from retirement. And when he leaves, I don't know what's going to happen because the new guys that are with him do not work anywhere near the speed he does or with the knowledge that he knows of how to fix things and having in. Service concepts, and we spend a lot of money with service concepts, but Bud is worth it there. He comes in, I can talk to him on the phone and he'll walk me through a building, how to fix that over the phone and having right there and knowing. And so Bud's within five years of retirement, and it's just like these other guys come in, they fix a problem two or three times, because they just have to remember how to get to it. But Bud gets it right on the time, and we just can't find that quality of people coming in. So, you know, my big thing, the trades, we gotta help the trades go, I mean, I'm up here talking to the Director of Operations, but we need, we need a workforce, because our, we have a lot of work for people to do out there that's good paying.
Right, and I think it's important, as you noted, that each year you've got eighty-five thousand, but it's for some for roofing, steel coating, tuck pointing. I had a feeling that more was gonna go to roofing than anything.
Yes.
But I, and it sounds like a lot of money, but that will be twenty percent of what you would spend if you had to replace one.
Yes.
So investing that much, let's say, two-thirds of it goes to roofing, or half of it goes to roofing each year, is a, is a good investment, because especially that many years out, lead times on, on materials. And then, um, also, if your roof is a little bit older, you know, you gotta meet the new energy code and bring it up, which means even higher costs, because they upgraded the energy code yet. So, like, those are good investments to sustain roofs in place and not have to replace. Um, especially with the current costs.
Yeah.
And I think we continue to do the Trump coating in most of those spots will be millions ahead in, in the fifteen-plus year window.
Yep, no, exactly. And the part is we have to remember, we got so much foam still on our leaf please, we restored these roofs with foam underneath. That foam still is reacting to the temperatures out there and everything, so that's why we have to put that money back in there. But it does save us a lot more money than tearing them all off, because then we started finding some of the other things we had to fix underneath them. But with that part, we keep them set, and then keep the water out of the buildings, so there's no fun when they come in. And then, you know, the North Grove teacher lot, millinery surface, I did put ten percent every year on that one, just because who knows where we're gonna be at by the time twenty-seven, twenty-eight comes in.
See how much it is a barrel.
Yeah, yeah, so that's, you know, and that's just, again, it's just the millinery surface is what we look at, because hopefully I cross fingers that they put the right amount of rock and stone, we won't have that undercut, like we had in several of the older buildings that we found. The undercut took a lot of extra money, you know, when the company asked for permission to spend that extra money, because it, it caught a, you know, we, we didn't realize how bad it was till we took the pavement off. And my hope in North Grove has a good underlayment underneath of it. And then I took the big projects out, so inside here then had each of the years then, and seeing, and so these are the big projects that are out there, that, you know, in five years, what should we really be looking at? You know, we have the high school bathroom upgrades, um, again, this has to be done in phases. We cannot do the whole bathrooms at the whole high school at the same time, we have to phase this in. Uh, two million to two point five million to do it in the phases, and so this is what I worked with Shels McNutt on, and taking a look at again with what that trend would be, you know, in the next two or three years, if we can get that done, that would be what the cost is, and they would make them ADA accessible. Again, remember, this is complete, and then they get completely demolished, walls all taken out, all the galvanized pipe taken out there. New walls put in, ADA structure so they can go in there easily with the handicap wheelchairs, the door frames get opened up. Uh, lockers get moved outside, because some of those areas then get moved with that part, because lockers go right around them and having in. And so, uh, but then again, that would get rid of that galvanized pipe. Again, this is just the bathrooms, we still have the whole green wing, the science wing upstairs that has all the galvanized. And then you have to remember that sits above your whole administration area and along your cafeteria. So then with that work, you'd have to take all the ceilings out underneath, which is a whole administration area, which work a twelve-month contract. We have to move that somewhere, so it's a big project, you know, with what to do with that green wing to bring that up. Right now, we piecemeal stuff the best we can as leaks occur up there and fix it in and going and having set. Um, we need to start thinking about boiler upgrades in twenty-four, twenty-five, um, because our boilers are getting to be fifteen, eighteen, twenty years old. And so we're putting a lot of work into them, um, and so at that point, you know, like, we should look at, remember, we put a bunch of boilers in at the same year. We don't want to do that again, we want to stay or this in to have in there. And so how to do that, then to start figuring out how to put in five hundred thousand for a boiler to have that. Um, again, if we go with those ones that we currently have, they are doing quite well. Just a simple in and out would save us money. What a lot of times, then, you know, with entry codes, you try to put an extra, well, that then changes up your whole boiler room. So if you've come and seen the high school at all, but, I mean, the chiller room looks totally different now after the new chiller series that we put in there, and what that required, the boiler rooms, you know, here upstairs looks totally different than when it did before, so. But that costs a lot more money to get those fixed and going that direction.
Those are our modules, right?
Uh, yes.
And what, and we, do we have repetition on them?
Meanings, I.
You can take one down and one gets to all these buildings.
Yes, 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 I do, yes, so that's why every building has two, middle school has four, and there's five at the high school, yes, thank you for that.
So you can replace them whenever they're available to, like, you have repetitions.
Yes, exactly, yeah, yeah, because we always have that one in backup, yeah.
And then the other thing I was just gonna throw out, I won't be here for it, but we talked about it a few years ago, uh, about inclusivity in restaurants. So, uh, that is not a trend anymore, that is becoming in the norm. Um, it doesn't align with plumbing code in the state of Illinois yet, so there's some work to be done there politically and with the R O Es. But I was just at Ed Spaces in Portland here a little over a week ago, and they had a very good presentation on. St. Paul Public Schools in Minnesota, they have converted all theirs to these inclusive restaurants, uh, or in the process of it, anyway. And, uh, if you all remember that TikTok challenge that we had not too long ago with destroying bathrooms. Uh, they had, they were hit by it like everybody else, except the inclusive ones, we're touched. Um, they did a student survey after, the architect that did it did a student survey after those have been applied. And eighty-seven percent either said they felt as safe or safer in the new structure. So they are individual, they don't have staff bathrooms, they don't have male, it's literally like a bathroom, a bathroom, a bathroom, a bathroom, a bathroom, and a common outdoor area or outside area that is under camera, not the bathrooms themselves, but, um, but they're, they're, that is not a trend anymore. That's starting to become the norm for anything that's going in. So when that's approached, whether that's a year or five years from now, um, F G M or whoever, we should be, if we're gonna do it, we better do it once and not twice. So that needs to be considered in the design components when we get to that point to start replacing them. Uh, I think we ought to consider a model like that, they have a white paper, I'll send it to you, say have it. Um, and it's been nationally recognized, so, uh, it was a good presentation, so I'll, I'll forward it to you. But that's something we should be thinking about whenever we start to tackle those restaurants, in, in any building, but particularly at the high school.
Yeah, exactly, up there.
Their bullying has gone down, their discipline's gone down, their drug issues have gone down, all of these things.
That would be fantastic, because bathrooms, I mean, the bathrooms at the high school get a tremendous amount of abuse, which is sad.
They do, and I, we just interviewed for a job in, in Belvedere in, in their main high school. And at least one of the junior highs, I think, the Southern Junior High.
Okay, yeah.
They have shut all the bathrooms down to the one because of discipline issues. They literally have one block that's open for anybody to use. How they get away with that, with the state, of course, I have no idea, but that's what they said. So, just, you can't go back to social issues, how do I have?
The amount of photos that come to me and show what's going on, it's just, yeah, it's atrocious how the kids.
They get used, so.
And we even went through and painted them just so they weren't the ugly pinks for the girls, they were made of neutral color. Now they're scraping their stuff into the paint, and we're constantly going in and repainting because we want it to look nice, but.
Yeah, so it's not a, it's not a gang bathroom anymore, you don't have partitions, you don't have, so all that stuff goes away, but.
Just individuals' goals.
Yeah, individual stuff, yeah.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
And so again, that, we would need F G M to help us plan all that out, so they're planning ahead of time and showing you guys, and the plan's all out for bids. So these are all stuff that has to go out for bids, this is all stuff that'll be forward, approved then out to you guys then as it comes through, because it, it's over the, you know, twenty-five thousand dollar mark. Um, you know, the middle school parking lot, we gotta talk about, because it needs, it's the, bus side is worse than the parent drop-off side. But if you, if a parent that drops off in there, you're noticing that the parent drop-off side is in rough shape. But the bus side is worse because of the way the buses that come in, it's just kind of attacking that one. Again, you can see then over a million dollars on the, to get those parking mods under control and having there. Uh, the P A S, the, the P A system upgrade then, and having there. That is if we wanted to go through and rip out and put all new speakers in the high school. And having, if you didn't want to just upgrade, just only go, because we did a middle school one here two years ago with theirs and just went in. But again, I'm not sure if all the high school ones then with this will be able to handle for the age. So that's our part that, so I put that in and just let you know that's an option to talk about, that, that it's all new wiring that's going out, and then new speakers needs to the rooms and that part. Uh, we have to upgrade South Prairie's, uh, North, North Grove and West. As we go through, we've done Southeast this summer, got theirs upgraded, because, um, the main phone went out, they can't, they don't make that phone anymore, so then the P A system's useless. So that's the problem with that. And so, uh, North and West have the exact same system, so when that happens, then we'll, they become brokers first, then we'll get that funds to put it in there. And having, uh, the fire alarm upgrade system, you know, seven hundred fifty, eight hundred thousands, what they've been telling me to upgrade that system there, to go away from the zones. And then each one is addressable, so we know exactly where to go to when an alarm goes off, the fire alarm at the high school. Again, that's one of our older systems in the district there. And having, um, roofing at the high school then, after, you know, talking to Trump Co. and having them, three million left to finish the high school roofs, to get that all done. And that's what current prices if we looked at next year, that doesn't put an increase on there in the buy. So that's just, if we went next year to go out, he believes that we give about three million dollars to finish up that building and having in. To finish up Southeast and West, then a million dollars apiece, and to finish those roofs, to get them done as well. Uh, South Prairie then, um, has a bunch of flashing work along the gym that we need to do, so two million dollars to get their roof under control. Uh, we've been spending about fifty-five hundred here just restoring things on the South Prairie roof. And then remember, it did the twenty thousand dollar, the flap of the gym, I showed you that one, what happened, it came loose, and that was above up there, so that was a twenty thousand dollar repair. If we don't get to that one in time for that, that's what's gonna happen to the rest of the building as these big windstorms come through. So that's why we try, gotta get it back, but spend that money to get that one to that direction there. That's why it's a little bit more because of what that roof is with that E D M roof. Um, we got the west wall of the sixth grade wing at the middle school, just a rough estimate, you know, from F G M is about one point five million to take all that brick, fix all that, uh, anchors on the outside, they'll be able to put that all back up along that west wall there. Again, that's just a rough estimate to help us out with that. Um, North Grove parent drop-off side, you know, when we look at three hundred thousand there. Uh, tennis courts, I wanted to put it out there, you know, six hundred thousand, replace the tennis courts, because we are down, the asphalt just is, is here, it's going, it's, it's at the last of its life. We're able to put one more coat on to get this going, to get us, um, I mean, if we can get five years out of it, I would be tickled pink to get five years out of it. But we have to look at, it's gonna cost us six hundred thousand, because it needs a complete redo, it means everything has come down. We have to go back in, there has to be new tiling all put inside, just so the water gets pulled away from those courts there. And having in, along with new gravel, along with new concrete, new fencing, and then with lighting, that's my lighting cost with a five percent increase on it for L E D lights out there. So L E D lights on it are expensive, uh, the beauty of L E D lights on that, it's only four poles, and it's about a dollar five a day to run. So you can run them all day for a dollar five compared to what's out there now, so that's the amazing part when you look at lights and seeing there. Um, I don't know, the neighbors haven't complained, we've, we've switched to L E D right now on that parking lot next to there. So if you notice it from the road, it's not the football lights on, on all the time, it's the parking lot lights, but they're L E Ds, so they're only costing us about a dollar ten for those three big lights running a day on that parking lot over there. Um, that parking lot is, they have a lot of issues, uh, someone's been kicking in the tennis shed doors all the time. So we've upgraded those lights and put more lights, so that way the cameras will catch them one of these days. And having in, because it's about number eight time that they've kicked the doors in, and then they don't take anything, they just kick the doors in. And then the last one, they blew a fire extinguisher off in there that they stole from someone from Centa, so they're not one of our fire extinguishers, ours are from Fox Valley. So I hope we catch them soon, because they're not making me happy. We had them in the west, we had the elementary classroom renovations out there then, so about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars a classroom is what the current bid that came in on those. Uh, we have about twenty classrooms that we presented in through K through two, so that's four point four million in the elementaries. Again, that's only K through two for upgrades, so that's just for them, we also need to look at grades three, four, five. This has nothing at all, the high school, we, the high school needs a lot more money for us to even sit down and look at it. I mean, fifty to sixty million to be able to redo a bunch of the rooms at the high school, look at current trend, what it would take to have out there. Again, we would sit down, you know, with F G M and the, the high school and the teachers and the staff to come up with what they did, just like they did in the middle school. You guys came up with a great plan for the middle school there, I mean, the high school, we've been there enough, we know what it is. That's why I didn't put any of those big plan, I, because those are huge items and having in. Why I put these up here, I know I'm, uh, talking a lot, but the one percent tax would cover these type of things out there. I hate that, you know, not my place, but I'm telling you, the one percent tax would really help us. If we could have that one percent tax, get us three to four million a year, we could tackle these things, a building at a time. Um, Shels McNutt really talked to me about if we could tackle one building at a time, he said going seven at a time. Because right now, why, it's they can do it, but the problem is, we don't have the staff out there to keep on spreading everyone thin to do this. We can tackle one building with full staff that way and get that building done, then move on to the next movie, move on to the next building, move on to the next building, and keep these repairs kind of going that way and having in. And then, you know, but the, the talk of the high schools, then how do we, what do we do for the high school? How can we get those funds to get the high school where we need to, where we like to have it at and having in there and set? Um, we have fourteen rooms in Southeast and West that have the old lights from nineteen fifties in there, we have upgraded them to L E D lights. But if you looked at them, they're just, they're, they're really old looking and seeing, and so then how to upgrade those rooms inside there, so I kind of put that in there. Again, it depends on, they are in part of the price when we have in there the classroom update. So when these classrooms get renovated, those lights get updated too inside those classrooms. But if we don't update the classrooms, we should look at a way then to be able to take advantage of some of the rebate center out there, to be able to come in and save us some money to get that going. But again, why do things twice? So if we're gonna go for the classrooms and we know we have the lights come at that time, or if we're not having any money for the classrooms, then we move forward with the lights and we work on the rebates that have that, and so it's always kind of a catch twenty-two there. Um, you know, we are at the time that, you know, the football lights, at some point in time, we need to talk about moving over to L E Ds, be able to use those poles that are still out there and having it, because they're in great shape and having there. But again, to move them to an L E D to save us funds, because, uh, when the football lights are on, you should see the, the electric meter, it, it spins. So it takes a tremendous amount of energy to keep them going, and so, but here's a way then, you know, when those bulbs start going out up there, then how to do an L E D conversion up there. So that's something we need to think about. And then, um, the rooftop units then at the green wing, how to slowly start replacing some of those, so they're starting to get at their age. And we're putting a lot of money into them up there, so it's at our time now to just replace a couple of rooftop units, take them out, put new ones in. Again, they provide the air conditioning up there for the green wing, so they don't have the chill water coming that direction. So we use the rooftop units up there for that, and then the hot water comes through the other way, uh, for that part for the green wing of the high school. So I kind of put those big items for you, kind of to see. Again, there's a ton of little stuff in here, so I mean, if you look, you know, we had eight million dollars for twenty-four, nine million dollars for twenty-five. It listed out all through here, all the little stuff that meet ADA code, meets up that's, uh, health, life, safety and coming in. And then I looked at what's, what's real that we need to have done, these are some of the big items for you guys to see all of this, because I know you're not reading this at night, because it's, it's, it's little print, it's little print. I know you do, yeah, but it's little, I have to, I have a magnifying glass, because it's, it's so little. And coming in to be able to look at it there, but when you look at it, sometimes I just kind of have to put it down, because it's a little overwhelming to see, because of all those things. But again, we're able to keep most things going with budgets with our crews and coming in to keep the lights going, classrooms ready. Any questions on that part for you guys before we talk about the next part?
That's it?
I know, that's the thing, I mean, yeah, yeah, I know, and there's so many more things, but those are the big items that just like, those are the things that keep on sticking out that, again, I try to keep stuff in the million to two million dollar mark, so you can kind of see that besides the, the big key items of major renovations. And having, because like I didn't put in the renovations of grades three, four, five in buildings, because that would be next. Now, a lot of those are, are gonna be cheaper because they don't have the bathrooms. So the bathrooms are what make us so expensive, is because we have to make those ADA accessible. And like even the ones here at North, they're very, they're very tiny, yeah, they're very tiny.
Any questions on facilities and projects in general before we move on?
I ask mine, so.
So the next part then is, you know, the consideration of moving the softball diamonds to the, uh, Sycamore Park District. And so, again, behind the lines, you know, ever since I've been in this job, we've been talking about softball fields. Uh, we got Jill over here, the softball coach, uh, she's been approaching me several times, Charcy's been approaching me several times about these softball fields, parents have been. And so we've been talking about these for my whole four years in behind the scenes, and how do we get the funds to do it? We tried to do some things up there that try to get things going a little bit. Um, but to get this under control, then you sent me out, I got pricing for us to fix things at the high school, and then I gave you pricing and what it would cost us to go out. Now, remember, I can't show any pictures of what the, what it would look like right now out at the park district, because we haven't paid the forty thousand to the firm, for the engineering firm. They were nice enough to give us numbers on what we asked for, so Charcy and Jill gave us things that they wanted, we sent that out to them. They were nice enough to give us those numbers, because they want, they want our business in the end, is what it is there. But we haven't spent the forty thousand for the plans, where you would see them what it is, but I showed some pictures, so you kind of have an understanding. So you can kind of see in your heads what that will look like in the end, because we haven't put any money forward for it yet, because this is just what they've given us, just like when I talked to Shels McNutt and F G M, they do this out, you know, they know that they're gonna have future work. They give me all this numbers, data, as we sit down on the phone, or they come meet me in person, so we can have these numbers for you and kind of work this stuff out and having it. All right. Jill was nice enough to send photos, just, uh, just, you know, what spring additions are like out there. Some things, as we know, we talked about, these fields, these fields are amazing fields again, June, July, August, September, October. Beautiful fields when it's dry. We do not play softball in those timeframes. And so the hard part is, this is a, one of the top diamond soils that you have in Northern Illinois. The other bad part is that this is the worst diamond soil to have in March, April and May. And so you can see how the water stays up on top of it there after rains, after a couple of days, this is still what it looks like out there and having in and having set. And then I started taking off some pictures, then to show you what the dugouts are, so the dugouts are starting, the, the, the floors are all collapsing, the, the tuck pointing needs to be done. But they're shifting, because this concrete's all shifting underneath, so for us to fix them correctly, we have to take them all apart. Re-do the soil underneath means you have to put all that undercut in there, put enough rock to stabilize it. Once we get that stabilized, then we're able to put these structures all back together. So that's why you see the cost of that, I mean, I basically, you know, for us to rebuild everything out there, I put everything, we have to rebuild, because these things are sinking. Right next to it sits the platform where we put the stands on for the parents to sit on, that one, that looks all the exact same way as this. It heaves, it hoes and goes through, it's a tripping hazard as it comes in. It does settle out a little bit once the frost is out of the ground, but again, you still have big chunks up there and having that on there as well. You can see this big. You can see this big one then, this one really doesn't go down much in there. And having again, this is what the players, for the softball players have to see when they'll come into that dugout, uh, for each of their games. Again, more of the fields, you can see there were more of the rain coming across this area. Here's where the tile comes across there. And so this constantly raises and sinks and lowers, depends on what mother nature does for rain out there. So sometimes this can be flat or sometimes like this one here today, it had a dip in it and coming through. Right now, we put some soil over, got it raised, but then some days it, it has a hump. Some days it goes down. And so soils are really funky on how they work. But underneath here sits then the drainage tile that takes off all the water from, uh, the bus compartment. So we have a tremendous amount of water that comes all the way through this way. It drains out there, drains past the areas, which then then again saturates the soils, which then make the soils look like that for softball games and having in. Um, but this is the playing area. So what we wanted you to see was here's the outside net. So here you have a person playing, running back and forth. Again, it's a, it's a hazard where they're at because they can trip, break an ankle, take out an ACL in their knee and having in. Again, this is what we saw last spring for their area out there and having that in for softball. Anything else I'm missing, Jill? Uh, I mean, you came, anything else that, I mean, it's,
It's just really hard. We're also just surrounded by water. So we were blessed to have the boosters provide us with an extended backstop. But a yellow ball as soon as it makes the thud noise when it gets stuck in the mud. I mean, it's ninety dollars for a dozen balls and we probably go through six or seven in one game when we should go through two. So it does add up. I mean, it's just hard being surrounded by that much water.
And so I'll give you, so one of the examples of the, we got ready for a Saturday game for them. And so we put down five hundred dollars worth of turfis, which dries up the surface, gets it ready for playing. We were about ready to go, took my guys, uh, two guys, worked two hours a piece, you know, so at that point there, forty-five minutes before a game starts, what more sporadic storm comes out of nowhere, they had to go out to the park district and play. So we spent all this money to play games and then we still wind up going out to the park district because then it just, something comes up that we can't get that field going and having set. And so, um, I mean, this summer, I spent fifty-five hundred on turfis this year for between baseball and softball to get the diamonds ready so we could play games. And so that's just again, how that grounds budget there. And so that turfis is the material on top that helps suck up the water, provides it, when it breaks down, it turns back into that soil. That's the beauty of turfis and having in. So it will slowly back down into it, makes a nice playing surface on there. Again, it sucks up that water, but again, we spent a lot of money trying to make playable fields. And then half the time we've got it playable, but then again, it wasn't playable enough. And then we had to shift them out to the park district to play on their, uh, ag lime out there and having set. So again, talked to them out there, you know, raising that plug plane up three feet, three hundred thousand. That includes equipment mobilization, erosion control, bring in soil, leveling, uh, six inches of playing surface on top of that and coming in. Uh, we talked about architectural plans, drawing and bidding documents for that to go out because again, this would actually all be planned out by an architectural firm for us to help us make this, um, so we can put it up for bid. And so about forty-five thousand for all that, underdraining and tiling, about fifteen hundred or fifteen thousand to go in there, a complete rebuild of the dugouts, uh, dig out and secure footings and rebuild thirty-five thousand dollars each dugout. So seventy thousand dollars for that. We have to move the fence out, do it being raised, you know, the, the three or four feet there, thirty thousand dollars reusing the old fence and poles. That's if they come straight up and straight down. We hope that they do, but I don't know how much concrete they use inside those ones. And so I don't know if they'll pull up or down correctly as they come in this point. But that is you're using the old fencing, uh, cause that new backstop, how many years old is that Jill? Uh, it's not very old, right?
No.
Yeah. But again, their backstop down there still isn't quite big enough to catch those tip offs that go off, that go into the swamp part. And we even have, uh, wood bridges over there from the cross to be able to get balls and having in. But if it makes it into the swamp part, then it's, it's out of luck. Um, then again, if we're doing this out there, we need to put a new scoreboard in, uh, new electrical to one of the dugouts. So that way they have electrical out there for when they make, uh, playoffs and having in. So they have that speaker system so that way Chauncey doesn't have to run a thousand miles of electrical cords to run that part there. Um, it's just nice having it out there for several things that they would use it for while they're out there on the field. Uh, then dredging up the ditch. Um, this here, for us to keep that whole back area, this is something that we really need to talk about because this doesn't only affect the softball, this also affects football, the freshman teams, the freshman soccer field. It's now affecting the varsity soccer field there in the back because that line is plugged up so much that the drain water that's coming off of those isn't draining anymore and having in. So that's something that, you know, in the end, no matter what, part of my budget then I'll be budging out then is every three years fifteen thousand just to kind of come through, keep that ditch area going, to keep that water going. Again, once it starts backing up past that point, then it starts backing up in my bus area, which then we had the lakes and the falls of the bus drivers in the winter time. So this is something I just do want to be open on is that this has to happen no matter what. Because we gotta keep that ditch going because I, it is, I, it has been definitely noticed as we've been going across after rainstorms, how much more water is being retained further up inside the playing fields that we haven't had in past years. And so I had Kyler out, um, excavating. They came out to give me some information, to give us some pricing on that. And, um, you know, he was telling me that, you know, the grade is really bad. And then we found the one drainage, uh, spot that comes up for one of the drainage stitches and it's plucked. And so it needs to be taken out. But you can pick it up, just clean it out right now with a shovel. It's still leveled to the mud. So it has to be drained, has to put the angle on it so that way it drains off our property and then goes over to the, it's heading to the Kishawaki River is where all this water is heading to. Uh, you know, while we're doing it right, again, then get them a good batting cage over there and coming in. Uh, contingency then of forty-five thousand, which is ten percent of the cost. Again, there's still no parking for vehicles down there. So again, you're, we rebuild a spot in an area that has no parking, no washrooms closed. Uh, you're gonna see some of the stuff that the park district has for us here when we get to that spot. So if we rebuild everything here, we have about five hundred fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred fifty dollars to restore. But if we're gonna restore and stay at the high school, this is what it would cost. But again, it's in an area that is, it's a wet area. Even raising up, it still will have, they'll have the fly balls going out into the swamp and having in and having that set. Um, so that's what it is to restore that. Next one. So then our cost then to go out to the park district out there then and having in. So again, they were kind enough to give us this. This is all what it would take for us just to meet ahead of time, to get the plans all set. So they meet three times with Jill, Chauncey, myself and Nicole, kind of go over stuff. So we have then a drawing to show you guys in the end of what it would be that we're gonna be sending out the bids. As you guys know with bids out there, we always put some alternates that we like to see for some pricing. And if it, if we have the pricing and if it's a good price and we have the money, we can go for it. If we don't, then we know that we don't. And then it gives us an idea of some things that, uh, you know, softball can work on. But she's, um, Jill's already done a great job of showing support for it. She's gotten money coming in to help us pay for some of this. Now, of course, it's not all, all of it, but she does have some donors that really wanna help move the softball fields to give these girls a playing surface that is respectable, that they deserve. You know, we have a state winning softball team and again, they played one game out on that year on average. So what do you think over your years? How many times, how many games have you played home? Do you, I know five people, I'm sorry, Jill.
The COVID year was the best year because we didn't start until April. So, and we played a little bit later. And that was the year that it didn't rain at all. And we played almost all of our games there. But that's the only year that that's ever happened. Otherwise, it's pretty realistic to think we won't get out there until, you know, and the tenth day of April, eighth day of April, and we start February, the last week of February.
So again, this is all of the, that's all the stuff behind the scenes then.
Sorry. Got a little happy.
Yeah. So then this is all the cost of what it takes behind the scenes. So this is the same cost I've put into what would take to do at the high school. So these costs you see here, I put those costs in what would take for then to plan out the high school one as well and having. But this is what all the breakdown is, what it would cost and kind of those rough estimates and having in there again, for us to be able to put it out for bid. And then here's what the cost is, the breakdown then to build it out there on that site. So again, mobilization to bring in all equipment, fifty-five thousand, the construction layout, uh, eight thousand, traffic control and protection, two thousand, topsoil stripping and hauling away, um, twelve thousand, six hundred. Some of this we're gonna save because we're gonna build a mound on the back.
It's already.
There's half a mound back there already from the soil. If they continue on, explain for me Jill, so they can, I don't know how to explain it better.
So like in the outfield?
Yeah.
There's gonna basically be berm seeding. So like at the, I should say tournament, they have a drastic, um, berm situation. But it's just a cool, different way to view the game. So fans could actually park their chairs up on there. And then you can see the entire field from the outfield. And they've actually done that on two of the other diamonds that already exist in that new quadrant there, where that's the plan for two of the fields and how people will be able to do things from the outfield.
And then that saves us because then we don't have to haul that soil away. That soil stays on proper. They build it into the berm, then they receive that over top and then they're able to be there. Instead of us taking this off to somewhere and be hauled somewhere, it saves us money in the end and having that part. Uh, again, put a construction entrance in this four thousand, uh, perimeter for erosion control, three hundred fifty feet, you know, a thousand five hundred. Underdraining that they still need some underdraining out there, eleven thousand dollars worth of underdraining. Make sure this is done correctly, even though it's on a hill. When we see some pictures, it sits up higher, but it sits on the hill. But again, if we're gonna do it right, we need to put in the stuff in there so that way the water still drains off of it and having in. Again, then the ball capping and fence. So there's four foot fence, six foot and then eight foot. And then, uh, we have the, the backstop and then the equipment storage. Some player benches on each side, base plate, uh, pitching mound, uh, four foul, the foul poles, you know, infield mix then. On top of that, again, we would have a discussion with them to see, right now this infield mix is the same infield mix that we, we would use that we have right now in here, or we go cheaper and go with the ag line. So that's a discussion we would have with them to see what their thoughts are and having. Cause if you guys know everything out at the park district is ag line because they're able to play quick on it. But as you guys know, for baseball, it's hard to play on at times and it's hard on players' knees and kind of it plays a little differently. And having in, so that is a discussion that would come out like, do we go with, so this is with the infield mix to make it be that same one that we have right now on our great fields, sitting up higher, it would drain off faster and having in. So they have it in there. So we would go with their expertise if we go that way, or if we then match what they have out there and go with the ag line. Um, the baseball diamonds does have the clay out there, which we use with the softball and the, the freshman field right now. And so we're able to get that, um, somewhat dry on a lower level and having in. Uh, we did bring, uh, we partnered up with the park district and we paid for one load of soil and they paid for one load to bring the baseball diamond level. It was a bowl area. And so when we got rain, the rain never crowned off. It caught in there. So now we've crowned it. So that should help with the baseball side. A concrete barrier curve to go around it and I'll show you why that's needed. So that way your soil doesn't keep on moving away. So that's, uh, something that, you know, can be gone, but then again, then your, every rainstorm then slowly moves that off the hill. You lose your, your limestone or your top clay surface as it comes through that way. Um, again, the crush path then, you're gonna see that we won't need as much because most of the crush paths is already currently out there from the other field. So this is one that would be a new one going across, but we just need to put a little bit of lime on both left and right sides of it. Again, there'd be some savings there with that, but this is just a kind of the broad one of what they put in for us. Again, dugouts in there then to have them ready for them. Uh, the stadium seating, um, is in there. Again, that's something that could come out. I just wanted to see what stadium seems sought for five hundred fifty over on that side. Because, gee, I just wanted to show what that price was so you can see. But again, that's something that we can make, be not as part of the project and then go with less seating out there and having in. Again, a bigger backstop out there for that twenty foot net. If you wanna see what the baseball field has, they have the twenty foot backstop net. And so that would catch every fly ball that kind of comes out that way, that comes off the bats that direction. You can see, so the other one was eight, I think, was it eighteen thousand? I can't remember what the previous one. So twenty-two, five gets you that taller backstop net. And then again, we share the cost then, uh, when the net goes bad. What was, do you remember Chauncey, what the cost was with the baseball when we split? Was it last year or a year?
We, we were five thousand.
Yeah. So then Chauncey pays that, you know, splits with the park district that way. Again, wool pens out there and having in, uh, warning track on the outside out there. Uh, press box we put in there just so here's our chance, you know, again, that would be an alternate item. But again, just to throw, so you can see what the price is of it, uh, PA system then that would go in that press box. Again, that would be an alternate item. The scoreboard, we need a scoreboard out there. And if I remember, the sports boosters are looking then, they would help us out then with that part then to put the electronic scoreboard out there. Again, then contingency then at ten percent of the cost, so five hundred sixty-one thousand, nine hundred ninety dollars. I know it's a chunk of change to see. And again, I wish I had pictures for you. But again, we haven't spent any money with the architects to put, this is just what they give us, the rough numbers on what we've asked for from what Jill and Chauncey put together, a wish list of what they really want out there after they won the state championship. So we kind of took these things and, and sent that off to them. And this is what numbers he gave to us. Again, there's some items on there that could definitely be alternates to see, to save us funds. And then, so if you wanna click to the next one, should be some photos. So here's the spot that sits up here. So you have baseball diamonds off the side here. So it's a two hundred twenty yard field that is ready to go up here. The, also the beauty of this is that the grass is always established out here. So when they cut in where that limestone goes into or that clay soil that we use, the, we don't have to worry about seeding out there because it's already seeded and having in. We'll do a little bit on top of the park district does a good job. But the nice part that the grass is well established and how they come in and cut, they won't even touch that other side out there as they move through. So that saves us money there and having that part in there. Again, you can see the crush line that they currently have coming out. So one whole side is already covered already by them. So we don't have to put this crush line in anymore because it's already there. We just have to put crush lime off the other way to go that direction. We're gonna go to the next photo. It's just show more of this, you know, here's the path already out here. We don't have to put this in now anymore because it's already been put out there by the park district. You can see the fencing over here off to the left of the other diamonds that they've already started out there. And having this was the last spot that they had open. Kind of show then off to the right then, so you can kind of see there is some crush line that we can use over there. The kind of use as we make this area here, all crushed line, so they can walk back and forth there. Again, this sits at the higher point of the park district out there. When you go out there, again, helps the drainage and coming in because water always moves downhill. You can't see it very good. I don't know why I didn't zoom in better. But I think I wanted to see the beautiful blue sky that day before the storm, right Chauncey? Here's the beautiful parking here. But what's some of the beauty of this is out there is that while your kids playing softball, your younger kids can be over here on the playground safe and playing and you can be, take a turn, take a look. And they're over there, there's water fountains out there currently. There's also some spots that, um, that they have for other games that they can play over on that side. So again, for the family type atmosphere, when they come out there with younger kids, you can watch them in safety, you know, and they're right over there. Cause you know, my poor Jake, day eight, there's been a baseball field. Day eight of his life, he's been at a baseball field. Now, he's a heck of a baseball player now at the age of eleven. But day eight, he's been on the field. It would've been beautiful to have something close for him to be playing at so we could watch him. Poor kid sat in that stroller for the first two years of life at those games. So trying to get a little better for you. This is that concrete curving there to keep in the material so that way it's not constantly flowing out on you. So again, you can take it out, but again, then we're constantly trying to put the material back in. Again, then the ADA ramp that kind of goes in there to help provide that as well as it comes across. But that's that concrete curving then that just keeps this material in here. So when rainstorms comes, it doesn't come over. You'll see that they ran out of money for two of the diamonds out there, didn't put it in. They put, uh, wood, um, planks from the railroad out there is what they cut then to keep the soil in place. So they ran out of money, the park district themselves for their project. So they cut this out on their end, but then they put in that part for the wood. But it's needed to keep the soil in place. Again, more, you can see again, coming across, again, this is what the height of that first fence is that in there. We were liking to go that taller fence is what we like to go with and having in. But again, the, the cost shows you is this type of fencing across here, fencing coming out here, fencing going out there. A permanent fencing across the back at the two hundred twenty yard line. And I talk fast and long and have. And so again, you know, I would love to show you a plan, but again, we haven't spent any money with them out there. Cause I know after last one, everyone's saying, well, we wanna see plans. Uh, we haven't spent any money with anyone to be able to come forward. If we're not gonna move forward with this, I'm not gonna spend money on a plan if we're not gonna come forward that direction. So.
And just as a reminder, from a financing standpoint, we were able to save money over the last two summers with the construction money that we had. So we have this money already set aside. Jill's done a great job, um, fundraising. She knows she's got more donors if we're willing to commit to moving this out to the park district. Um, so we know that cost is gonna come down. We know the sports boosters are gonna help us also. So, um, really tonight, we're just looking, we're not asking for a vote, but we're looking for the board to just give us nods that we can go ahead and move forward.
Can you give us some numbers on those, the donors, the park, what the park district's gonna put in, what the sports boosters are gonna put in?
Um, we've raised about fifty-three thousand dollars already, um, from businesses, from former players, from parents, from just, you know, current players and their families. I ca, I do not have a set number, but I have had people tell me, we'll give money once you tell me we're moving to the park. I'm not putting any money into the high school diamond because they just felt that strongly that that, in a way, was wasted money, to be honest with you, because we're, we are consistently trying to repair the same thing over and over again. Um, but I, I do have a couple of other donors that were like, let us know what you need. Does that mean they're gonna whip out a hundred thousand dollars? I'm not anticipating that. But I do think it could be a somewhat significant. But I do think it could be a somewhat significant amount of money in the realm of fundraising.
What's the additional funding for having to provide? I assume the district then would be providing transportation for practices, games, et cetera. Is that an additional cost then for a year that's not accounted for versus building up our facilities here?
We, I can speak to that.
Yes, well, that's, yeah, Chauncey.
We currently do not provide transportation to park for baseball or softball or any of our off games. For practices or traditional areas.
So do we have a dollar number for sports boosters or for the Park District, what they're gonna be putting in?
Well, the dollar money for the Park District, I believe, is zero.
No, no, because yeah, the Park District has spent all their funds. They were, they had a spot to build a one, but after all the increase in costs, it got gobbled in the rustle. That's why they had a general park that they were gonna put here as part of their, is it their twenty-twenty plans, right there? Where they did that big funding project out there.
We put a field in there and they get used to the field for the best part of the, of the year and, and they pay nothing for it.
Yes, no, no, for that one, no, they don't pay anything for it, but then they maintain it all, they, they help us. I mean, they, they, they really do a good job of keeping it there. But yes, that, that we would put it out there and that we would help with the first one and then we get first rights for it there for those months when it's out there. And having, but then it would be, the community would get to see a great, great thing. But again, yes, if I could, just get more schools to buy that, good field would be out there. And sports boosters?
Well, I know they've committed to the electronic scoreboard and I'm sure there is more money that they've committed to. I mean, they will commit, I just don't know what that number is.
Yeah, I really wanna know those numbers, have those a little more solid before I would make a decision.
I was gonna say, I was under the impression of the last meeting, we were talking about a quarter million, but now it sounds like we're talking about half a million financial.
No, that and a hundred and twenty thousand is your stadium seating and press box. We're not committed.
Okay, but I was also led to believe there was a lot of fundraising and all we got covers the contingent and the scoreboard, so.
And you take those out and then lowers your contingents in two, so there's your, that's half of your cost, for sure, I mean, for what it's worth.
Yeah, we put out there, here's a chance, if we put it out there, we put it out for this. Again, there's, you know, alternates and, and scene, but I want you to see everything while it's there.
Yeah, and then the other two are like, what, twelve, twelve thousand, fourteen thousand, where you think there is some savings? Cause they've already done some of the work out there, so maybe you're saving a half of that.
Yep.
So if there, if there are facilities at the Park District that we, that the team can use now, what makes that not a viable, long-term solution?
We cannot use the park facilities come eight, mid-April, because then they started having their, their programs.
Who, who's their program?
The Park District program.
Yes, Park District.
Little League and.
Little League.
Those were run by the Park District?
Yeah.
So they give us their fields until that time and then if, then we're out of luck, so that's where we.
We hit the road.
You guys hit the road then, because we've had, I mean, you, my couple that were supposed to be home, but they had, there was no place at the park. They had to call real fast, Chauncey has to call, let them know that we got no spot here, then they have to go to that field.
I just didn't understand that was sanctioned by the Park District, cause I understand we have an agreement with them that said that we get first right of facilities out there unless it's a Park District function.
Right, can we get that with the baseball field during March, April, May, first week of June?
But I'd be remiss if I didn't revisit the fact that I think for every year of the last ten years, I've brought up the issue of sports fees and thus not having. It, it's clear just from tonight's presentation, we've got one point two million to spend just on two single gender sports out of however many twenty-two sports that we, that we run. Where are we gonna find the long-term budget solution for maintaining all those facilities? Cause it's clear that that, plus the fifty to sixty million we've gotta spend, plus the fact that we're already eating up, you know, your budget just for maintaining roots inside of, I mean, where, where is this money gonna come from? If we don't find some sort of long-term annual budget allocation for it? Cause unfortunately, every time we go through the budgeting process and the negotiation process and everything else, nobody wants to leave us money to take care of facilities, so.
I, I think, you know, because of the, the level of debt service that the district has and you're really looking at, you know, in terms of the high school, I'm just gonna focus on that as one item, you're looking at either a referendum or you're looking at, you know, revisiting the one percent sales tax. And I don't know what that would generate here. We did that in, in my, my previous district, so it's a nice chunk of change in a much smaller district in a, in a much different economy. But when you're talking about that amount of money, it's gotta be, have to be one of those two things, or you continue to put these things off. And that, it's conversations we've kind of beat around the bush on, because we've got some other things on our, on our plate, but.
Unfortunately, neither of those are two things, neither of those are things that you can count on with any certainty either.
So what happens is that if those, if neither of those two things happen, you delay the work until you get the debt service to, to go out and do that, which we hope we can avoid, but that's a, could be a reality.
Yeah, I don't, I don't even know how delaying helps, again, because we don't have that.
Just don't have that.
There's no flexibility in the budget on an annual basis to even say, well, even if we put this off twenty years, we can't save up that kind of money.
I mean, we have to think about keeping our classrooms dry and keeping our roots intact.
Keep it heat.
Yes, yeah.
Keep it heated and keep it dry.
Well, I, I actually support this. I think it's great that the Park District and the school district are trying to work together. I don't know, you know, the things that you're saying are, you know, optional or the stadium seating and the press box. There are a lot of money, but I also think that we support our sports teams. And you look at the new press box at the football field and a lot of money goes to those sports. We have a great softball team and they have nowhere to play on our grounds.
And they go up to the Park District, they have no shelter, they sit on a bench that's not comfortable in the wind, in the rain, in the, I mean, it's not pretty where they sit at in softball fields out there. Even, you know, we've done the baseball, there's not much for baseball on our side either and those kids sit out there. So, you know, think about when we're, they're out there in April, those girls are out there trudge across. Again, since they're playable out there, you know, some of, they're going across water to get to playable fields, even to get to some of the spots out there where they sit at in the lower half. They're walking through water to get to playable fields that they have built up on those four spots. But when the water gets too high, then their outfield, they're sloshing, the infield's playable, cause it's that ag line. Ag line's amazing because it dries like you can't believe, but again, it's a surface that also has some issues, but.
Well, and, you know, I just have equity issues. We have this male sport participation in a, in a sport that is all male and they have a beautiful field, beautiful facilities. You know, the softball team's kinda been left behind. We just haven't done anything for them. And over the years I've been on the board, the water sitting on the softball field has often come up and we obviously can't fix it. It needs to be redone, to leave it where it's at.
And to that point, we just keep putting more money into something that just continues to get bad year after year after year. And I can't imagine what other schools must think when they come to play in this field, that this is what we have for our kids.
Or what our kids think of it.
Right, well, of course.
Right.
I tried to put a fence to hide some of the garbage that we, or piles, if I was embarrassed, cause you know, as we're through there, cause you know, we have our pile where all the branches go and everything and our extra soil that, from areas. It looks bad back there and then people, they're really saying, we're raising three cows out there, but they have to pay kids. We have a large animal facility on the high school property. Some people don't realize that. Down below, we can raise out, we can feral pigs down there, raise pigs, we have chicken coops in there, bunny coops, and can raise three cows down there. Well, the cow's manure goes into a compost pile, then that we compost out and it gets down level and we go spread it out in the field area. But that all sits, again, when you're looking down the first base line, you see the compost pile and everything. And so, but at least the good part, she's a softball player. So, yeah, Jill was a little bit more understanding once you're like, it was one of her girls. But again, they walk past the cows to go past there, so we have all that stuff back there that they have to walk past.
Why wouldn't we haul that stuff down to the, the field off of the middle school?
Meaning.
The cafe field?
Yeah. Spread the, well, because in town, which we, we spread, we send it out further, cause of the.
It wasn't farm field when we bought it.
Yeah, yeah, no, but they never spread your manure in town. Yeah, I don't, that's part, we send it out of town to be spread, but we let it compost down, cause that pile, pile, the beginning of summers like this, when it composted down, it was this high and we just sent it out two weeks ago.
Well, if we can have it in town at the high school, I would think we could have it in town at the middle school. There are fewer people out there than there are around, around the high school.
Yeah, I just, the farmer, maybe we never spread next to houses. Yeah, we have the pile there, we're able to contain the pile because of the pile of compost, so.
We don't have to be next to houses.
Yeah, well, you have all those backhouses and then you got the front one that floods, you don't want that manure going into the river, so then we put it.
Well, yeah, but you, you could put it, you could, there's, there's areas there where you can put it where you wouldn't be near houses.
Yeah, but yeah, but no, we send it out of town, so, but yeah, I mean, we wanted to, we could spread it right out there.
I mean, so, so that issue, I mean, the cosmetics issue, I, I really don't see as a real issue.
Yeah.
So Mark, while you were making your presentation tonight, I was really struck with how lucky we are that you're in this position because you're, I've never felt like our buildings have been as loved as they are right now, as cared for as they are right now. Not meaning that we have the money to do all the things they need, but that you actually have a plan. It's never been like that the whole time I've been on the board and I appreciate that. Can you, perhaps you can talk a little bit about why you think it's important to spend this much money on the softball field, knowing all the other expenses we have?
No, no, I can definitely, our biggest part is because manpower that we have to spend to try to get fields ready that we can't play on. You pull, I'm out there, I have my groundskeeper out there, I pull two guys off of district staff then to keep one field going. Then we gotta go out then to finish that day, then we go out and get the baseball diamonds going again. And so the amount of manpower that we take with it, it just would give us, free us of time that my district guys can actually then be repairing a bunch of stuff that needs to be repaired. So we push off a bunch of district repairs in the spring. Today, we pulled guys off because, you know, we had to plow the practice field out there for them, cause of the mountain snow is on the practice field. We had to plow that sort of safe surface for the football players to play on, cause we don't want them injured before the big game on Saturday. So I was one and a half hours today and that plowed myself going back and forth so they could free up. Cause we had two water leaks in buildings, had to send two guys go fix those. I hopped on the tractor for them to go back and forth and having set. So it's just one of those things, I see like, I don't have to worry about that. If it's on an area, that won't take us as much time to get that field prepared, leaving us more time to work on other areas, more times to be on the things that come up inside the buildings and having in, because some of the stuff that, you know, like a toilet that's leaking in there, that toilet that sits for a few days till we get our guys in there, because they're out working on fields. To get the fields going and having in, because we only have to get one groundskeeper. For over a hundred and some acres, we have one groundskeeper. And how to do that, the beauty is that you guys do have us have for the soft, for the football field and the soccer field, that Jason Butterberg does an amazing job with those two areas. Even with one person there, with the way the grass was growing this summer, July and August, I've never seen grass grow as much as it has in July and August on us. They, we couldn't, we couldn't keep up, we were mowing every other day. And we couldn't keep the playing field small enough, we had grass clumps up there, then we're pulling up the grass. Again, you know, composting that off to the side, so we get it down small enough, so we can be able to spread that out.
Remind me again how much we saved in the, or didn't spend in the current round of renovations?
Like a little over a million.
Yeah, everything comes back after contingency.
One point one inch. So we would still have five hundred and fifty thousand plus whatever is saved or taken as an alternate. Let's say, I'm just gonna use it for an argument, so we take the stadium seating and the press box as an alternate and maybe there's a little bit more savings. Let's save that number and the contingency percentage drops because of that. So you're at two fifty, two sixty, two seventy, somewhere in there. That still leaves us three quarters of a million dollars to tackle some of the other stuff on the list, which we should be doing. Your choice to present us the way you want to spend it, that's the most critical, or what fits the budget that is a single building, let's say.
Exactly, you kinda finish off something the best you can, yeah.
Right, that is a high critical item. So I, I too see this as a huge equity issue and we have to do something irregardless. So you're gonna, in the rough numbers right now, you're spending five hundred K plus at either site, right? So either you're gonna put it on a site that you have less guarantee of it being long, long term or having longevity, or you put it on a site where has a better chance of longevity.
And a site that offers more with parking and.
You have other amenities that are available. I do find it a little off-putting that the Park District doesn't wanna kick in any money. I mean, they've had it land forever. What, what is their cost? And they get, as Jill said, they get a lot of benefit the rest of the damn year. So I would like to see them participate in some additional way, to be honest with you. And I would say that I'm for moving forward with it, but, but the board has a cap on the district funds that are gonna be spent on. Cause we know there's some fundraising available and that maybe sports boosters could kick in and then say, hey, our threshold is two fifty. Make up the rest with donations or the Park District or, or sports boosters over a period of time. Cause I do see it as an equity issue. I think they deserve to have a good facility. And as long as I've been on the board, it's been that way, I'm sure, long before that. But I, I think we have to balance that long ass list of stuff and this. So I'd like to see this move forward, I would support it, but I think we should cap what, what the board, the district would spend and have the fundraising and the other components kick in. And I would like to see the Park District participate in some way, because they do get quite a bit of benefit. And if that means we front the cost and they're gonna pay us a, a user fee for the next, next number of years to recap, as a recapture type stuff, I, I'm okay, I'm open to that, but I think they should pay for some of that, cause they get some benefit out of it.
Are, are they gonna be the ones financially responsible for maintaining it forever?
Yeah.
Is they're gonna guarantee that when it's, it just repair in ten years, that they are going to fix it and not just say, well, we don't have the funds for that now?
And fix it up to standard.
Right, and that should be in writing and maybe that's part of their country, here's, here's what we think we're gonna spend fifteen thousand a year maintaining it. I don't know what that number is and we're gonna agree to also kick in five thousand dollars a year, or whatever it is for ten years, to contribute to it. I, I would like to see some skin in the game from them, other than here's a piece of property that we're willing to let you use, so. I was just gonna say, currently like with baseball, we play at the park on field one and they, they do almost all the maintenance and then they might come to us and say, hey, we need help with the pitching mound and I'll get the boosters to rebuild the pitcher's mound or something along that lines. Or they came to us and said, hey, we, we, we need a new backstop, you know, it's ten thousand dollars, so we got the money for that. We did half and they did half. I see a similar with the big stuff. Yeah. With the softball diamond, but the day-to-day stuff would be on that, just, just cause that's how it is right now. And I think, you know, you, you put in the, the backstop, you, you're gonna get ten or fifteen years out of it before you need to do significant work. So again, if they're kicking in five thousand a year, ten years, whatever that is, by the time we reach the age of that, then yeah, I would think that would absolutely make sense, you, you split the cost and we're both getting benefit from it. I just, I just think they should have some skin in the game in front, so I would like to move forward with it myself. But with those, those caveats and try and get it done and truly make it an improved community partnership.
Well, I say, I'm, I'm much more comfortable with the two hundred, two fifty area, at least initially. I think, I think some of those other options, you know, unless you convince me that there's a significant cost savings to doing them now, while they would be nice to have, I don't, I don't think that that's responsible, given the other objective, you know, list of things that we have. But I am very curious from an equity or equitability issue to have major report from Chauncey as part of your annual presentation, just to understand what those, what it looks like on a per sport basis. I don't have a high school or I didn't go to high school here, I don't know all those sports and what their facilities are like. So if this is an issue and I've heard several people say that it is, I can tell you in ten years, nobody has ever reached out to me about the, the softball diamonds. Would've brought it, but the last meeting, I went back to notes, I found one email from like five years ago and that was just thrown into a note section, so. If there are other equity issues, I don't know about them.
Yeah.
So I would like to just hear just a snapshot of each sport, what they, what facilities they have, how that differs, what long-term we should be looking at to make the, you know, bring parity in each of the sports.
You do hear it more when you're in the score, you're circles and your kids, you're in that racket and age bracket, it's obviously around you more. I would say that I'm, that's a big number, I get that, but it's, it's not an unreasonable number. And I say that we put a brand-new softball field in, it's in a guide score, top-notch field. Top-notch field, the, the state even said, hey, if you could build four of them next to each other, we have the state tournament here, because we need four fields. But it's one field, now included, masonry, structured bathrooms, concession building, a small parking lot, but that was twelve years ago, and we did it for a million and six, all of it. So the fact that the field for here, I would have, to be honest, I would have expected that to be seven fifty, at least. So I think if those are the numbers that we're getting from them right now, those are, especially in today's pricing, reasonable numbers. I don't think they're overblown numbers, just for what it's worth.
Yeah.
Because we, you know, that was twelve years ago, it was a top-notch field, and I think we did it for like a million and six, million and seven, and I know the field cost was well low, lower than that slightly, but not that much, so. I think that's a reasonable price for what you're talking about. I would consider those two other things as alternates, just to see where those come in, because they get you pretty close to the two fifty. So at least all the core stuff could be done, and then maybe that's added over time, or if the fundraising and the park district and the boosters come together, they can cover the alternatives.
Yeah, no, that's why I just put up, just so you all see, see all those costs, and then again, the beauty of alternates is that they're alternatives. It gives us an idea of what the cost is, then it gives us a goal for fundraising, gives us a goal for the sports boosters.
Right, but I don't see, I don't see spending a similar amount of money on the existing field worth it. It's either we don't spend any money on it right now, or, or this option from me, because I, I just think there are too many challenges to overcome in its current location.
And I think the one thing that Mark, that didn't, one thing that hasn't even been brought up drainage-wise, is the church on the south end.
Yeah.
And the Taco Bell, that area, all that drains into the ditch right next to the softball court. So none of that.
We take a tremendous amount of square footage of water that comes past that area, so people don't realize that part that we bring. All the parking lots of the, of the back high school area, all that comes through, all the church parking lot, all that, that comes our direction, and then everything then from Taco Bell.
And if we do, and then move forward with this, and you come back to us with what the designer, and I'd like to also know what you picked to spend the other seven or eight hundred thousand dollars on, you know, so that we know what we're checking off the list sooner than later.
The Mark actual.
Maker Space Center at the high school was spending eight hundred thousand, yes, that's what I.
I would like that, that would be beautiful to have at the end.
Have, have you given any thought to what you would use the field for, that area for, once it's.
No longer.
Chauncey's got ideas, but I got ideas. Yeah, no, no. I think we, I mean, you guys, you have a, your FFA program brings a tremendous amount of money from those new, you know, that, that fields that we have out there, eight dollar corn right now with little input, they have lots of money, they would love to see a larger, be able to present a larger one that they would pay for, a larger, large animal facility. Thomas Sifmore's always said that since we're grandfathered in, we can put it in there since we're in the heart of town. Just have to make sure we beat the setbacks, and then it could actually become a little bit of pasture right back there. Because the only thing that can go on there is pasture, it works right now to the point where the football uses it as practice. Again, so they can kind of keep that part there, but the other part can go back to what the natural, put it back to its natural spot, which was pasture, which we had the sheep out there when, you know, when I first came, there were, the sheep were gone, the two years before I came, and then I started with the bucket calves, so I had bucket calves out there. And raised them out, you know, two of them.
So, I mean, that is a growing program, it's continuously grown.
No, I'm glad there's.
So, you know, there's some things out there, you know, when we talk about those ones, you know, if you run Burlington, put in the beautiful small vet facility in there, that was in there, small, yep, so that's a beautiful building, that's something you could look at to put that down there. Again, you know, that building, the, the FFA large animal building's been a great building for all these years, but again, it needs, it would need a total upgrade because.
So would you bring back the, the animals to that, to that location as a pasture? So my thought process is, we did that vet building, and they're the only vet tech program in the state right now. Is there a chance we could partner with them, since they're literally right next door, and maybe, because they're looking to do large animal stuff now too, where our kids could even get some vet tech training.
Yeah.
Uh, then I know they're in a different loc, co-op, they're in a different location of co-op.
Yeah, but they're in their backyard, yeah.
Right, but they're in our backyard, to be helped with animals and, and share, and maybe get some kids that want a vet tech certification, an opportunity to get it.
Yeah, no, a hundred percent there, yeah, no, that would be, yeah, I would have no problem talking to people over that way, because. Yeah, no, it's a great, you know, we're a little jealous of that program over there, that they, they have that. And knowing how the kids in Sifmore have gone to become vet techs out of it, so we did, I did taught a vet class, so that they would have it, but it was part of, I had six kids that I had to teach at the top of BSAA, so they're pretty much independent study, but they learned the vet science material from the FFA level, but I was there overseeing them, but out of that, I had four vet marions in my time that became actual vets, not vet techs, actual vet marions, by getting that experience, having the large animals down there for them to see, and one girl was an in-town girl, she loved pigs out of it, she was caroling pigs down below.
Right, well, they have three vet classrooms and then the lab space, and the grooming space, so we, you know, it's become a very, they have waiting lists, so. But I'm sure they would work with us and if we could help supply some of their stuff, then might be a nice relationship to have, get our kids some opportunities.
Yeah, we gotta stop beating it and suffer up and down, he'll talk to us.
Don't go that far.
I can tell you about some other stuff there, but it's not public knowledge yet.
Yeah.
Well, Mark, if you get to, to know going to, at, at some point, and you've done a great job with the Tuck Point, you have, coming up with what those annual maintenance costs are, and we need to keep incorporating more of these projects, you know, track facilities and tennis courts and then everything else. All that stuff that needs to be maintained, that we know has a finite life, we need to feel that at some point, come up with that number on an annual basis, whether it's getting expended or not. We need to be able to budget for that, we need to use that as part of our story to the community when we talk about any of these referendums or, or sales tax issues. You know, that really, we've got one and a half million that should be getting spent, I'm making up numbers for the audience, but you know, one and a half million per year that we're spending, and we're only able to set aside two hundred and fifty thousand, it catches up to you at some point.
The great example is the elementary district that I worked with, they had thirty, thirty-eight buildings, I think, suburban district and K eight district. And he said, as far as Roos and Avonville, we do X, you know, we do, I think it was like eight hundred thousand square feet a year. And he said, we have to, because their lifespan is twenty years, says by the time I do eight hundred thousand a year, it's been twenty years since I did the first. So it's a continuous rotation, you miss one year, all of a sudden, boom, you got a million and six. You're, you're under the water in one year, so he goes, I have to spend that to, to, and, and obviously they do seal coating and stuff in between to help expand that life, but yeah, he goes, I, I have no choice or I'm behind the ball.
Otherwise our next district, they will be condemning a school.
Which I sadly have seen happen, so, yes, yeah, yes.
Yeah, no problem, thank you guys, yeah, again, appreciate what you guys do, thank you for having me here tonight, thanks for your guys' work, so. Yeah, Jill and Chauncey, thank you guys for coming here tonight to answer questions with it, but again, you know, if, if it wasn't something I felt we shouldn't go for, I would never present it. You guys know, I present stuff that we need to really think about, you know, move forward.
And for that, I guess, we don't need to vote, this isn't even a struggle, but is everybody okay, under, and I kind of took notes as Steve was talking, under those criteria, cap of two fifty, getting the park district input, we know we've got some fundraising, the coaches done, get the boosters involved. Under those criterias, everybody okay moving forward with it?
Yes.
Yes, I think I am.
Okay.
I do just have one clarification, because you guys have talked about, you know, the board's only willing to put this amount in, is that what it's gonna be for each sport that are gonna come to you guys? So like, we have a million dollars worth of work we need to do on the tennis courts, is that something that we're gonna have to fundraise for going forward? I guess I'm just not clear.
Is that what equity demands?
What's that?
Is that what equity demands? To me, the, the equity requirements between boys and girls sports.
This I see as a huge equity issue, is what I say.
Does the boys get everything for football and the girls get everything?
Well, I mean, we gave the football three hundred thousand dollar press box, but that was sold out and that is okay. So I just want to make sure I'm understanding, going forward, are we gonna have to fundraise every time?
Perhaps, that's all I can say.
I would, and my answer would be this, it's probably not our intent, but if you look at the list of other things we have to do, probably wouldn't be bad that we approach each project that way, if possible.
I mean, when you think about it, we always, we're always fundraised, I mean, we always, you know, especially for anything above and beyond like the basics.
Thanks everyone, appreciate your time, thanks, Chauncey, thanks Jill for coming.
Thanks, Mark.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess going back to, I mean, my, I guess my support was more what's gonna take, get it to a functional, functional level. I don't know that you can look at it on a per sport equity basis, because cross-country doesn't need anything, what, what would you spend a quarter million dollars on for, for cross-country? So I, I think it's hard to look at it that way necessarily, I mean, I mean, I could go forever, I'm sure, on football issues. I wasn't a football player, but that, that's where that number came from for me, was what's, what's gonna get our girls a, a place to play. It'd be great to have those other things, but knowing what else is outstanding, it's hard for me to, to want to jump all over that. I would hope that we can get there on a public fundraising standpoint, once we've committed to a site, that maybe we can spend a year or two with, with the community and, and raise for those things, if that's gonna be, we'll get good use of that.
Can't hurt if you have a lot.
Well, the first half of the meeting is over, now the, the second half. Just kidding.
To the highlight, the superintendents.
Hopefully the, I think will be actually a, a, one of the quicker parts of the meeting. First item under superintendent's report is the school calendar for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So I met with a couple of different groups of, of folks, administrators, SCA leadership, presenting the twenty-three, twenty-four calendar for first reading tonight. Just some of the highlights, it was in the board pack, that you guys had an opportunity to see that, it's really pretty similar to, to this year's calendar. We're reallocating a teacher institute day, moving that to the, to the beginning of the school year, so what, two teacher institute days and a teacher work day. It's one of the things that's, that's come up the last couple of years that I've been here, just having more time gaining in here to prep and getting things ready. Professional development as well as, is just giving teachers time to work in their classrooms, so that's one of the things that we did. Winter break is December twenty-second through January third, those are days that students and staff would be out of the buildings. Last day of attendance would be December twenty-first, first day back would be Thursday, January fourth. And that would be, if it's not a teacher institute day, we just come back and start on that Thursday, be two days in, and then allows us to kind of ease into school after winter break. Spring break is March twenty-fifth through April first, that's actually six days, so it's at that last full week of March, which is what we've historically done. And the Monday after, because Easter falls on March thirty-first, so something we've done historically also. Last day of student attendance at the end of the school year is, is May twenty-second, last day of teacher attendance is May twenty-third. I put asterisks there because that's assuming no emergency days, so if we have emergency days next year, we would tag those on at the end. The only outstanding question is how we're gonna use the virtual parent-teacher conferences in, in November. We have two days of parent-teacher conferences in November, the first day is in-person, the second day is virtual, we've done that for the last couple of years. It's actually a nice option for, especially for parents who, who have trouble getting away from work. There was a question asked about whether or not that could be kind of a hybrid, so make that a virtual day, but allow in-person conferences. I would be open to that, we're gonna do some digging to see if, if that's what staff really wants to do. But regardless, it would still be a parent-teacher conference day, so the calendar doesn't change, it's just the format on that day. So while that's outstanding, it really doesn't impact the, the calendar itself. Asking the board to approve that on first reading, and then we put it on the agenda for May, or November twenty-ninth for second reading and get a final. Any questions for me?
Or Chris, or whoever sat at, just some conversations I've had with parents in the last week regarding coming back from Christmas break on a, on a Thursday, is that, do we get productive use out of the kids after a week and a half off, are they coming on Thursday, Friday, and then go right back to?
Usually, usually, yeah.
Are they?
I, I was.
Socialization.
It's social, not education.
Yeah, not education, no, but socialization, definitely.
I think it's easing into it, the idea of easing into it on Monday and Tuesday, and then going for three more days after you've been out for two weeks. I like, I actually like the idea of, of starting midweek, whether it's a Wednesday or a Thursday, kind of eases everybody back in, there is some social aspect to that. But I think a lot of them are ready to go back to school, maybe not to, to start crunching, eat, eat, count, but to see, to see friends and start to get back into routine instructor.
So this is the first reading, and, and now this will be circulated so that teachers can comment and the public can comment, and we'll, we'll look at it at our, on our next meeting.
Yeah.
Same day off, the public has the same Thanksgiving week.
All that, all that stuff stays the same. The twenty-four, twenty-five school calendar, the only, I mean, there, there may be some tweaks. We weren't able to, to participate in the Kindredwood Institute this year, that's in every other year, so it wouldn't come up on this calendar, but in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, we'll add that to the fall, it's, that happens in, in October. But that doesn't impact this calendar, because it's their, the Kindredwood Institute again, is every other year.
We don't put graduation day on here?
We don't.
I'm not even talking about graduation. We'd look to do it that last, you know, the, the, it's not, it's not the memorial day, because the weekend before, right? Uh, graduation. It'd be that, it'd be that, that first Sunday day, let's stay with that.
Like, we wouldn't want to put that out here yet.
Not yet, and, and that's historical, what we've done, we need to wait to.
I understand.
Um, yeah, I mean, I think we'll send this out for a comment and, and then consider it for a second reading at our next meeting. Thank you, thanks to the committee for the work that they put in on this.
A lot of good input.
Yeah, I know there's a lot of interest to keep in mind and to juggle when you're putting this together, so. And there always seems to be a few comments that come through that are helpful too, so, a little forward to that.
Uh, my last item is future focused, so it's the first meeting of the month, and the topic that I selected tonight was mindfulness in schools. And hopefully this plays, Steve and I may need your help, but hopefully this plays. So, what is mindfulness? You may, you may know, you may have heard about it, but before I talk about how it applies in schools, I'm just gonna play the first couple of minutes from this video, I saw this a couple of weeks ago, and does a pretty good job talking about what mindfulness is.
You're so close.
I know, I felt so good about it.
We are blessed to be a blessing to others in need, like the kids all around the world going to bed on an empty stomach tonight.
Our lives are filled with distractions, email, Twitter, texting, we're constantly connected to technology, rarely alone with just our thoughts. Which is probably why there's a growing movement in America to train people to get around the stresses of daily life. It's a practice called mindfulness, and it basically means being aware of your thoughts, physical sensations, and surroundings. Tonight, we'll introduce you to the man who's largely responsible for mindfulness gaining traction. His name is John Kabat-Zinn, and he thinks mindfulness is the answer for people who are so overwhelmed by life, they feel they aren't really living at all.
There are a lot of different ways to talk about mindfulness, but what it really means is awareness.
Is it being present?
It is being present, that's exactly what it is.
I don't feel I'm very present in each moment, I feel like every moment, I'm either thinking about something that's coming down the road, or something that's been in the past.
So ultimately, all this preparing is for what? For the next moment, like the last moment, like, and then we're dead. So in a certain way, are we gonna experience while we're still alive? We're only alive now.
John Kabat-Zinn is an MIT-trained scientist who's been practicing mindfulness for forty-seven years. Back in nineteen seventy-nine, he started teaching mindfulness through meditation to people suffering from chronic pain and illness. That program is now used in more than seven hundred hospitals worldwide.
So how can you be mindful in your daily life?
When your alarm goes off and you jump out of bed, what is the nature of the mind in that moment? Are you already like, oh my god, your calendar pops into your mind and you're driven already? Or can you take a moment and just lie in bed and just feel your body breathing, and remember, oh yeah, brand-new day, and I'm still alive? So I get out of bed with awareness, brush my teeth with awareness, when you're in the shower next time, check and see if you're in the shower.
We may check and see if you're in the shower.
Well, you may not be, you may be in your first meeting at work, you may have fifty people in the shower with you.
Kabat-Zinn says mindfulness takes practice, a lot of people start with a training class to learn how to meditate. He agreed to teach us at a weekend retreat on a remote. He agreed to teach us at a weekend retreat on a remote mountaintop in Northern California. When we arrived, we were told there'd be no television to watch, no internet, not even an alarm clock. The retreat was full of professionals, neuroscientists, business leaders, Silicon Valley executives. Before we began, we all had to surrender our last ties to the outside world.
Put your devices in the basket, you know? I'm contributing my MacBook Air and my iPhone happily.
I wasn't exactly happy to give up my phone. I usually check emails several times an hour.
So let's take a few.
So one of the reasons I, I picked this topic, um, this has actually come up at several conferences or workshops that I've, I've attended or been part of. It's amazing how fast-paced our lives are. And, um, I don't know if it's coincidence or not, but as Anderson Cooper was kind of narrating, you could see people kind of milling around. Open the basket, got packed, or passed around to put your phone in. It's amazing how, what kind of an impact that has, moves you so much on this. And, and our students' lives are so much different than our lives growing up. You know, after school, it was, you go and play, you go hang out with friends, and you ride bikes, or, you know, we, we struggled to get our own kids out doing those sorts of things, because they wanna go home and they wanna play games. They wanna, wanna get on their phone and, uh, catch myself, uh, my wife catches herself walking around another house tapping around while we're just fixing dinner, or, you know? So mindfulness is applications in every area of our lives, at home, at work, at school, at church, while we're shopping, in the shower. I didn't wanna bring that up, and he brought that up. It's been a recurring theme in multiple leadership events that I've attended, probably over the last 18 months. It's really, it really comes down to being more aware and present in everything that we do. So how could that help in schools? Helping both students and staff focus, just taking the time, put some of the distractions down, and, and focus on where you're at, what you're doing, who you're with. Helping us be more present in, in what matters, and tuning out the, what I call the, the mental clutter that just gets into your head, and not, like he said, are you in the shower? Are you already mentally in that first meeting of the day, thinking of what's coming next? Helps to decrease stress and anxiety, again, in both students and potentially in staff. And maybe provide a strategy for students and staff to work the social, emotional, um, mental and other sorts of challenges. Sometimes you can see students walk through the door. I saw, I, I saw it more when they were getting on the bus in the morning, but still in, in the mornings when, when I'm in schools, a lot of kids are happy to come in, they're happy to see each other, they're happy to see teachers, and whether it's Mr. Franks or Mr. Flavin at the door welcoming them in. But you can also see students walking in, carrying the weight of the world, or whatever's going on in their personal lives at the same time. So, uh, maybe at some point, helping our students and our staff practice mindfulness in schools just helps us all to put those things down a little bit, and not just focus on the academics of what's happening in schools, but the social aspect a little bit as well. Uh, I had to revise this last bullet point a couple of times, this is my last point, um, for this item. Mindfulness is getting a lot of traction over the last few decades, maybe it's a strategy to help us all pay attention to what matters most in finding common ground. The common ground, uh, that issue is something I think that our society is struggling with mightily. There is so much conflict, there is, there is so much confrontation. And, um, I'm a big believer in being able to sit down and have a conversation, may not always agree. But I sometimes agree and disagree, it's not the way our society works right now. It's, this is what I want, right here, right now, and I'm gonna do whatever it takes to get it. And I, I think maybe part of that is, uh, the, the extent or the degree of social media that we pay attention to every day, and the relationships that we have in our life. So there's no, we don't have, or, you know, we're not, I'm not suggesting that we need to add mindfulness to, to our, our courses and what we do in schools, but, uh, it might hurt a little bit. And I know that there are some, um, teachers in classes that, that practice just in quiet time. You know, at some point during the day, to, to calm your mind and to kind of refocus and re-center. So, um, mindfulness in schools was the Future Focused topic. Relates to SEL and, and just supporting students and staff, but, um, I'd be open for questions or comments.
I always dismiss the Apple Watch notification when I'm so.
No, I hear, that's, uh, was, I was taking a course a, a couple of weeks ago. It's, it's been a lot of time, just talking about how our brains are genetically wired to be anticipation engines, right? That's, that's how you survive, is anticipating the next thing that's gonna kill you in your life, and avoiding that. So we're constant, it's, it's hard to turn that off, right? You're constantly thinking about the next bolt, and where do I need to be, what do I need to be doing? What, what question's gonna get asked that I need to be prepared for, and it's hard to shut that off. So trying to be intentional about it, um, and appreciate the moment is, is an art, for sure.
Is there, um, at high school, a policy in place, or was there at some point a policy in place on cell phone usage during class? Or is that something that's present, at least have, I'm drawing a blank, because I know, I think we spoke about this, and I know I spoke to the teacher about this, to, uh, just electronics in the classroom setting, and what it means to be present, like you, like me. You know, is it, do you see an application like this maybe bridging to just widespread limitation to electronics?
Well, I, I, I do know that there are policies at high school, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, but at the middle school too, where I think that cell phone use is most prevalent. Where it's, it's really supposed to be restricted during class, and, and I know my daughter has gone to classes at times where the, the phone goes in the basket at the front of the class every day when she walks in. And while that removes the, the phone as a distraction from her during class, during academic time, the other piece that I think is important, and Thomas kind of mentioned the journaling activity that they're doing here at NOR, needs to be intentional also. So not just getting rid of the device, that, that alone doesn't necessarily do it, but, but being intentional and why you're getting rid of that device, and spending more time focused, reflecting, whether it's journaling or just the conversations that you're having in class. So could that play into it? Absolutely, you know, the self, uh, kind of a blanket cell phone policy like that. But I think that the other piece that, that we would be missing still is, is what's the intention behind that? You know, not just giving up the device and the distraction, but being more focused, uh, during class, during class discussions, or whatever happens to be going on that day, that certainly could be part of it.
Yeah, I, I definitely, I mean, I like the idea of having students or promoting the idea of being present in what you're doing and not being distracted. I, I don't know a lot about mindfulness as a concept, so I, I can't speak a ton to it, but this was helpful to learn a little bit about it. Do you see other applications, or like, do you have an idea of what current trends or applications of mindfulness might look like? Like during spark and stretch, or?
Again, some of these leadership events that I've been part of over the last, I would say, year and a half, had an opportunity to follow up with principals, teachers, superintendents, who have implemented some sort of mindfulness practice. And you can do that in a lot of different ways, you know, sometimes it's meditation, sometimes it's just quiet time, moment of reflection, so to speak. But I know some educators who have implemented that in their classroom or in their school, um, not necessarily district-wide, but just implemented that kind of quiet time, where everybody has a chance to refocus. And, you know, the feedback is, is good, that, uh, I don't know, that, that it's anecdotal at best, there's no quantitative. It's not like test scores are growing up or anything like that. But just people in general seem to be a little bit easier to get along, to get along with, kids seem to be a little more focused in class. But I, again, I think it goes to, um, doing it with intention. You know, so, uh, I, it also, there are, there would also need to be buy-in. So I can't just say from a district level, hey, we're gonna start practicing mindfulness. There, there needs to be some buy-in, uh, in order to make it really effective, and, um-
Well, I'm just thinking about the learner profile from, like, what we're talking about with Mike, and kind of re-envisioning what that looks like. And I just see, like, entrance, or, I, when I think of this, I think of entrance and exit surveys, at least in, in, like, an application setting in the classroom. So then I wanna think about, like, this idea of personalized learning and building out learner profile. And then I think an entrance survey, an exit survey, like, could that be the mode, or, or where that application for mindfulness would look like? And then I see a bridge to, like, SEL. And so, so I, I like it, I'm, I mean, I, to me, it seems like the concept of being self-aware, and then also being able to use info, I'd love to be able to collect that information, and then give, and then have that handed to somebody who can then respond to it. To me, that's where I see, like, it being really helpful as a, make more proactive approach to the, like, the social piece that a lot of schools are missing, so.
Yeah.
I mean, I'd, I'd love to hear Mike's, you know, take on it, if he's, or if he sees a bridge to it. But, again, like you're talking about, you know, it's not like you would just say, I, you know, put mindfulness in place, but.
Yeah.
Could we start by just offering, uh, you know, a course or whatever in mindfulness for teachers during, um, you know, those in-service days? Don't, don't they get, like, a variety of things that they can choose from? You know, maybe we could start by just have, putting together some content for that, so that at least people can start adding that, and then maybe, you know, down the road, a year or two, you can start, they can, teams can start finding ways to incorporate that, just like we incorporate these other, you know, outcome-based things into the stuff they're already doing on a day-to-day basis. So it's not necessarily, you know, a class on mindfulness, or even a, you know, 45-minute section on mindfulness, but maybe it's just the way that, you know, some activities get approached, that there's a, a 30-second pause, I don't know, making stuff up, because I don't know the science behind it.
Sure. I, I think those are really good points, and one of the things that, that Nick and Mike and, and, you know, if you'd be hip, done already with Sparticon, you know, just a couple of weeks ago, but have talked about doing in the future, is just providing opportunity and choice, you know, for, for staff when it comes to professional development. And if we offer a specific session on what mindfulness is, or that kind of practice of being present. But I didn't, I didn't think about, until you mentioned, just kind of incorporating those kinds of practices into how you structure other sessions, that may be on totally different topics. You know, you, you put it out there and, and see if there's interest, and if there is, you certainly wanna support that, like we've done with, with other ideas and, um, and programs too, so it's a good idea.
It, it ties into facilities too, so being able to practice it. I would suggest you read a book by Carolyn Duett called Mindfulness. He was a U of I professor, I think she moved to an Ivy League school, but she was a U of I professor. It's a very good book. It ties into facilities too, and providing spaces that are calming, or gathering, or different types of seating. It's why you see that in the classroom, why the difference between schooling and learning, um, what are the textures, what are the forms? What is that particular student of like that engages them better? Not having just cells and built, the schooling aspect. It's, uh, it ties into facilities, I would, I would take a look at that book. I'd also look at, um, what biophilic design does, so when we go through and start renovating these spaces, we need to incorporate some of those concepts, because these are, as, as, as Mr. Exum noted, those are renovation projects. So renovation projects doesn't mean you have to put the same tile down and paint the wall solid color. You can use a different light fixture, you can put different colors on the wall, and different textures, and, and different floor finishes that will cost you the same, but it has a totally transformational aspect to the space. So providing transformational spaces that allow for kids mindfulness, so they can step back and, and on their own volition, go, I can just calm down here, or, no, I like to sit on, I like to sit on wood, as opposed to something, so, it was a little different. So I would, tying all that back together, we talked a lot about that at this, at Spaces Conference, too, what that means. And there is studies that show that biophilic design in classrooms raises test scores. So, and that includes natural light, that includes natural textures, natural patterns. They can be natural colors, they don't have to be earth colors, they just are neon, you know? And they may be in the shape of a leaf or a branch, but it's not a branch or a leaf, it's just, it's interpreted that way. And that biophilic piece really does, there is research on, on all of that, that shows increase in test scores and drop in discipline.
Anything else? And we'll move on to, uh, open discussion and future agenda items?
I have, I have two. The first, um, I must admit, in our last school board meeting, I was behind on reading school board emails, and the next day or two days after that meeting, I caught up on those emails and opened the video about our PD day at the end of October, and I was just so impressed with the passion and the fun and the talent that our administrators and Molly Lander and-
I was gonna say acting, is that right?
Yeah, acting, costumes. And I was, I was really bummed that I had not watched it before that meeting, so that I could have thanked them. It actually created such excitement for me, I, I actually wanted to attend myself. So I'm hoping maybe we can just have a little presentation about how the day went. Excellent, perfect. Um, and then the other thing is, I am really thirsting for some data. So often by this point in the school year, we've had a presentation, maybe even at this meeting, about school report card, a bit of more of a deep dive than what you see, and help in interpreting it. Or on map testing, and I just feel like, we just, I don't know, we just haven't had that presentation, and a lot of it is the COVID years, and... So I'd love a presentation about where we're at, or the school report card, or, you know, I've been reading a lot about the national report card in relation to remote learning, and I just wonder how it's affected Sycamore, it actually was the reason for my question of how this is made.
It's actually on the agenda for the 29th also.
Okay, great.
So they're asking, showing.
I'll be here, yeah, perfect.
We, uh, we kinda have to get back to, we used to have a rotation where, uh, one meeting would focus more on financial issues, the next meeting would be on curriculum and, and those type of issues. I think we probably need to get back to some kind of balance like that. I, I know, I know finance is, is really heavy at this point in time, but, uh, you know, what's going on in the, in the curriculum and, and, um, that side of the ledger also is important too, so. Overall, as a cycle, it would be good, it would be good to go through that, so we have some of that.
We, we can flip that this month, but that's been our goal, is to hit education stuff, teaching and learning, beginning of the month, and then more operational stuff at the end. We flip-flopped those this month, but, um, Mike Price will be here on the 29th to talk about school report card. He'll talk, I think he'll talk about the Sparticon, how that went, but also, um, just kind of teaching and learning update in general, but a little, a couple of different topics.
Awesome, thank you.
Other, uh, issues, questions, discussion items? Future agenda items? No? Okay. And I need a motion to go into executive session for the consideration of matters related to the appointment, employment, discipline, or dismissal of personnel, student discipline, matters related to individual students, purchase or lease of real estate, and imminent litigation.
Second.
Roll call.
Nelson?
Yes.
Ren?
Yes.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Davy?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Dombeck?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, we will, uh, go into executive session for personnel consideration, and I'll return for our final votes. Okay. Uh, we're back in open session. Is there a motion to approve the personnel report as presented? To move?
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Davy?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Ren?
Yes.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Dombeck?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
Salute.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned, thank you.